Thursday morning, January 16th, 2019, session of the Portland City Council. Carla, please call the roll.
Fritz?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Hardisty?
Here.
Youdaly?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here. Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome to the Portland City Council. The City Council represents all Portlanders and meets to do the city's business. The Presiding Officer preserves order and decorum during City Council meetings so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the Council Clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The Presiding Officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When you have 30 seconds left, a yellow light goes on. When your time is done, a red light goes on. If you are in the audience and would like to show your support for something that's being said, please feel free to do a thumbs up. If you want to express that you do not support something, please feel free to do a thumbs down. Disruptive conduct such as shouting or interrupting testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. Thank you for helping your fellow Portlanders feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe.
Thank you. Before we move to communications, I'd like to turn this over to Commissioner Hardisty.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, community members. I have a brief statement that I'd like to read for you. As I start my third week here on the Portland City Council, I am concerned about how privileged, and specifically white male privilege, is limiting the public's access to City Hall. There is a chilling effect on persons who are unaccustomed to coming to City Hall to have their voices heard when they see and experience a disruption that seems to be the new normal at Portland City Hall. The privilege afforded a small group of white men to be disrespectful, to be disruptive, to be self-centered is not appropriate behavior in this building. This behavior limits access to those entering this building for the very first time or who are new to the political process. I ran my campaign on a platform of creating one Portland, a Portland where regardless of race, income, sexual orientation, or country of origin, you would have a respectful interaction and reception when you entered City Hall from city officials. We fail in our job when we don't make access equal, accessible, and fair to all who seek a voice in our process. We are all aware that we live in a state built on white supremacy, and that legacy of that history lingers on today. Many of the disruptors I know personally and respect their desire to be heard and the issues that they care about. However, their issues and concerns shouldn't drown out the voices of others who have come to this building seeking the same access and opportunity. As someone who has spent time, a lot of time, on the other side of this podium demanding accountability, I find it chilling and disrespectful that there are a few white men who think that everything this council does is about them. It isn't. I want to engage people from all walks of life and their local government, but I am very concerned about how they will experience their local government if their first, second, or third visit is what we have seen previously in these council chambers. My open message to those who seek to disrupt this process is this: If you have a proposal to improve the outcomes for the people in the city of Portland, you will find a welcoming ear and my office ready to assist you. However, if this is simply about having footage for your YouTube channel or your Facebook page, you should be aware that using your privilege in this way cannot continue. You have a right to have your voice heard. I am encouraging other white men and women to check the behavior of those who seek to drown out voices of others. Civic discourse cannot thrive if it is not coupled with civility and respect for all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. And I know others would like to comment as well. Thank you for your strong statement. Commissioner Fish?
Well, first of all, I want to just congratulate our newest member for her statement, which I strongly support, and thank you. I also want to just acknowledge, Commissioner, that we often hear from our employees. In addition to this chamber where we do official business, this is a building where lots of people work, and we have witnessed significant disruptions that go from chambers into the workplace. And people have told us that increasingly they don't feel safe and welcome in their own workplace. We have an obligation to maintain a safe workplace and a respectful workplace. It's a legal obligation under federal and state law. We want people to feel pride in service, and we want people to know they can come to work and be safe. So I would simply add to your excellent statement that as we think about how we model good behavior in this space, let's also remember that just outside these doors is a place where lots of people work, and they have a right to enjoy a safe and respectful workplace as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Fish. Commissioner Fritz?
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty, for your leadership. I thoroughly support what you said.
Thank you.
I have a couple of comments as well. First of all, thank you for your strong statement. There are plenty of opportunities for people to have their voice heard in this chamber, and you've heard me say this many times. People can sign up for communications. That gives you three minutes to talk about whatever you want to talk about. People have the right to testify on the first readings of resolutions, of ordinances, and there are other opportunities to have one's voice heard as well. What we have witnessed in this chamber, and I would say last week was actually a new low. We had a large group of people coming in for the reading of a proclamation. They happened to be from the Eastern European and Slavic communities, and what they were subjected to was 15 minutes of hostility and verbal abuse. And as you heard me say last week, and I'll say it again, that has no place in this chamber. It is not only highly disrespectful to the people who are trying to be heard, who have signed up for their time or have come in to testify on a particular issue, it's a form of harassment and intimidation to try to shut down their voice. And you heard me say that last week as well. And as Commissioner Fish has just rightly pointed out, there are many employees in this city who are required to come here to this chamber and either be present, like our legal counsel and our clerk, or they are required to testify as a condition of their employment. And they should not be subjected to any kind of verbal abuse. It takes time away from the rest of our agenda, and we've seen in the past when people are disruptive, when they protest, when they lie down on the floor, when they start swearing at people, when they force us to clear the chamber. That takes time away from everybody else because it shortens the amount of time that's unavailable for public testimony later in the agenda. It also costs the taxpayers a significant amount of money. I do not need to tell anybody in this chamber that we have had to significantly increase security expenditures over the last year, year and a half, in response to what Commissioner Hardisty describes correctly as a relatively small group of highly disruptive individuals. And last but not least, I get asked all the time. People say, "Well, hey, Ted, you are the Presiding Officer. It is your job to maintain decorum in this chamber. You know these people are disruptive. You know they are coming here explicitly for the purpose of disrupting this democratic process. Why don't you just exclude them?" And the answer is, the courts have thus far held that we cannot preemptively exclude anybody from this chamber based on their First Amendment right to be here. We cannot presume that they are going to act out based on past behavior. And maybe it's time we revisit some of our obligations with regard to maintaining an open, welcoming, and respectful environment for everyone. So I know my colleagues are interested in this conversation. We'd certainly be interested in feedback from the public. But Commissioner Hardisty is right. This chamber should be packed today. It should be full of people. We have an agenda that includes affordable housing. It includes significant pay equity issues. It includes significant issues that are of concern to everybody. And there was a time when you could fill both the first and the second floor of this chamber with citizens who wanted to come in and hear what their elected officials were doing. But for a very, very small number of people from the outside, this chamber is largely full of city employees and people who are on the agenda today and a small handful of others. And to me, that is damaging to our democracy, and it undercuts the right and the privilege that people have to be here, to speak, to be heard, and otherwise enjoy their First Amendment right. So Commissioner Hardisty, that was a long way of saying thank you. I appreciate your statement, and I strongly support it. Thank you for bringing it forward. Very good. And with that, communications.
Item 31, request of Dorothy Holland to address council regarding Portland Gray Panthers.
So I had a question of the folks who are testifying on communications. I noticed you are all with the Portland Gray Panthers today. Would you all like to come up at the same time or come up individually? It's your choice. Whatever makes you feel more comfortable. Thank you.
Dorothy is not able to make it.
Okay.
I'll read the rest. 32, request of Brian TJ Jackson to address council regarding Portland Gray Panthers. And 33, request of Sally F. Frosmann Cecil to address council regarding Portland Gray Panthers. And 34, request of Edith Gillis to address council regarding Portland Gray Panthers. And 35, request of Lou Church to address council regarding Portland Gray Panthers.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Good morning.
I don't know who'd like to start, whoever'd like to start, and if you could just state your name for the record, please.
Okay. My name is Brian Jackson. I live at the Yards Apartments down right next to the Broadway Bridge. I'm a 100% disabled veteran that was, I would say, residentially challenged up until I got a voucher from Home Forward. Since then, we've been having a lot of problems with the management there, with everything from maintenance to security problems. We have tenants that have had serious electrical problems in their apartments that have taken months for those things to be taken care of, and there are safety issues. We've had black mold, cockroaches, rats. There's a problem with management not following through with maintenance, and the city has a big investment in this property. I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $21 million. We shouldn't be having these problems. Home Forward is not following through and holding their management company accountable. At one point, I did contact Commissioner Daly's office, who was very instrumental in pointing us in the right direction. Thank you very much. Your staff spent a lot of time with me getting us on track, getting us to code enforcement. We had a crime assessment done through the city, which was very helpful in trying to get some things done. Unfortunately, the management company has not done anything on that crime assessment except trim some bushes, and it's been very frustrating. There's a lot of people that are in that complex that have disabilities. The management company retaliates against any tenant that bucks their system. They've tried to evict some of the tenant unions. I burned the tenant union there as well. They've tried wrongfully to evict one tenant who complained she had a broken window and over a month to get it replaced in winter time. It's just ridiculous. We have another tenant that has had some maintenance problems. I could go on and on, but that's just a sample of it. We did contact code enforcement, the city. They had the crime assessment done. We got ahold of Portland's Tenant United. So your office definitely got us in the right direction. It was a great resource list that you provided for us. Unfortunately, we're still being crushed by Home Forward's not being proactive in holding their management company or their company accountable. What we're asking the city for is to lean on Home Forward a little bit to ensure that management stops the harassment and what they're doing to anybody that's in the tenants' union, they're retaliatory against, and it shouldn't be that way. They're destroying Home Forward's mission statements, which is provide safe housing.
Mr. Jackson, what was the name of the property you live in?
The Yards Apartments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Commissioner Hardisty, on your position.
Thank you.
It's nice to know my vote went to something nice.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Sally Frosmann Cecil, and I'm speaking as an advocate for the homeless in Portland today on behalf of Gray Panthers. Homelessness is an ongoing state of emergency in Portland. This is affecting more and more elders, along with many other vulnerable populations: people with disabilities, families, and just those who have been displaced by social, political, and economic disaster. We must do more now for citizens living on the streets of Portland. We need to fulfill our social contract immediately, the way we would when many people are displaced by a natural disaster. Instead, the city of Portland and the state are sweeping tent encampments away. Merchants complain about the homeless downtown. The people in the community object to people in their backyard. No one wants homeless people on the street. We can't sweep people with no place to go under some kind of imaginary rug. Long term isn't good enough in a state of emergency so serious that such a large group of citizens are on the streets every day right now. Now, I want to say, I am not a person who is going to say the sky is falling. I have victim survivor services certification. I have studied and done at least mock versions of mitigation, preparedness, response, and getting over, basically, disasters, mass victimization. This is something I've cared about for a long time. I don't think it's a bad thing that we're doing long-term planning, but I do think that a lot more could be done now. Now, people object to health issues, urination, those kinds of things, but we don't provide any kind of porta potties or anything for people. People complain about people not working, and yet we don't do what you would do in any country, cooperative efforts or something that the Peace Corps have done, that people in the Vista program here have done. There are so many things we could do that we don't do that could be done now to help people. And I just kind of think that that is something that it's not sufficient, that we're not acting now the way we should for people who need help now.
Thank you. And perfectly timed, by the way. That's hard to do. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Edith Gillis, and I'm presenting you some solutions that City Council can implement pretty soon, and I'm going to give you two examples that I've observed where people who were elderly with disabilities were made houseless as a result of city policy. In one case, it involved making at least 12 people houseless, jobless, indebted, and further disabled. So immediately punish any use of Portland dollars used to make people houseless. This includes city taxes, fees, fines, impound, confiscation, theft, hold, grants, loans, tax breaks, or partnerships. Punish the harassment or worse of people who are houseless, poor, suffering. Doc cop pay. Withhold resources and punish landlords and shelters for evicting or raising rents due to police harassing tenants and guests. Punish murderers, attackers, rapists, extortioners, and their associates for frequenting or terrorizing their crime victims and victim families. When they do so, landlords often evict the victims. Protect civilians' right, access and use of their documents, tools, clothing, gear, transport needed for housing, work, and custody health that otherwise would make them houseless. Punish Portland cop uniforms, gear used off-duty, especially to terrorize poor or suffering people. If you're not being paid on duty, don't wear the uniform. Pay Portland cops at a normal rates during protests, paperwork for end-of-shifts arrests, houseless interactions, or military exercises. Frequently, they will wait till the end of the shift and arrest houseless so they can get overtime at the end of the shift. As soon as possible, redirect such police monies and means to instead provide housing and mental health. Punish the cop use of or profit from items confiscated or stolen. Redirect any or all items or funds to provide housing or legal support, if not promptly returned to its owner. Hold individual cops in the Bureau liable for misconduct. Every month, I hear you voting to give more and more money to the police and spend more and more money taken away from other services that we need in order to pay for the consequences of police misconduct. Hold individual cops and the Bureau liable for misconduct, and redirect to housing money for cops paid administrative leave, pension paid for cop involved with excessive force or deaths. And the two examples that I gave is that when I was donating some materials to Gateway Center, I saw a woman who was elderly with disabilities frantic. She had just been made houseless by the city of Portland police, who had gone after her landlord because he couldn't get mail when he was in the hospital dying with cancer and was blind. And then when they had a hearing, while he was at City Hall to have the hearing, the Portland police came with military weapons and closed down the house and evicted all of the people who had businesses on the property and all the tenants who had been paid. All their property was destroyed, and they lost housing. They didn't have their paperwork. And another case, the grandmother of a child who was murdered is repeatedly harassed by the police as they make false charges and arrests, and as a victim of constant police harassment, she could be evicted from Home Forward.
Thank you. Appreciate your coming in today.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Commissioner Hardisty.
Edith, can you tell me what the apartment complex is that you refer to?
This latter is Home Forward's Peaceful Villa on 47th and Clinton, and it was Azie, the grandmother of Patrick Kimmens. And it was a house with several businesses and other housing within it in which people had businesses and housing. All those people became unemployed and housed as a result of the Portland police doing illegal action and then destroying their property. And that was on Johnson Creek.
And when was this?
East of 82nd.
When was this?
About a year ago, on Johnson Creek, and currently at Peaceful Villa. Thank you.
Could I ask one question, Edith?
Yes, please.
So you're claiming that the police engaged in illegal activity.
Repeatedly.
Did anybody file a complaint with Independent Police Review Commission so that it would be investigated?
No, because when some of the same people had done similar things, those reports were missing, and they were further harassed. At this point, they were a matter of life and death.
By the Auditor's Office? The Independent Police Review Commission is in the Auditor's Office. Was somebody in the Auditor's Office threatening or harassing them?
No. Portland police threatened them, and the papers that they would follow up on when they got attorneys or friends found out that those papers were no longer, or that those files were no longer there. That has also happened with Independent Police Review for police in the past. And then this woman was across the street from, just in kind of a grassy area between Johnson Creek and that property, and then a man that was just down in the tent that people thought was her was being raped. And when she called the police to try to protect him, she was arrested. So the harassment goes on and on.
These are very serious allegations you're making. So I would appreciate if you could give us a date, a time, a place, any of the above, I will file the request. But these are very, very serious allegations you're making, and this is the first I'm hearing about it. So if you have some facts, I would encourage you to bring them forward. Thank you. All right, first time. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
There's only three chairs.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I apologize. Thank you. Welcome.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Joanne.
I had to stay here.
Amanda.
Chloe. Nick and Ted. First, I want to thank TJ, Sally, and Edie for speaking with us today. Gray Panthers is concerned and has been over time as organizers on housing targeting both IPM, Income Property Management, which is a subcontractor for Home Forward in a great many cases, as well as Home Forward itself on tenant rights and housing. Overall, as we've experienced the largest federal government shutdown in U.S. history thanks to the most right-wing, pro-capitalist president in U.S. history, Donald Trump, it's important to note why many of us continue to advocate, in some cases... important to note why many of us continue to advocate, in some cases, like TJ and Sally and Edie, to militantly, but hopefully persuasively, advocate for tenant rights and housing, for legalizing rent control in Oregon, finally, for speaking up and fighting back for those whose voices have been silenced or simply ignored. Nationally, the silenced and ignored have included elders who attend church from Charleston to Pittsburgh. They include students no longer with us from Sandy Hook to Columbine to Parkland. Here in the Northwest, more recently, the silenced and ignored have included Karen Batts and Jason Washington. I handed out copies to council of recent Gray Panther blurbs on housing, rent control, and tenant rights. The title for one, Ted Wheeler and the Ghost of Karen Batts, was changed to the more polite "Real Action Needed to Ease Housing Crisis." The Tribune has been kind enough over the past year to print articles we sent in vis-à-vis the May 15th primary last year in that election, why Joanne Hardesty by far was the best choice of the five candidates in that primary, along with an article for effective gun control laws, to ban assault weapons, and ban high-caliber magazines. We appreciate the Tribune doing that. Going forward, the tripartite presidency of Donald Trump, Mitch McConnell, and Rush Limbaugh seeks to do one thing: protect privilege and power of white men against the poor, against workers, against immigrants, against students and tenants and transit riders, against black and brown, against 53 not-real countries, to paraphrase Trump just a bit. However, Gray Panthers believe that impeachment, rent control, and gun control are more than aspirational goals. We believe that if folks like, in history, Steve Biko, Chris Hahn, Tom Hayden, Dorothy Day, Harvey Milk, Rosa Luxemburg, Bernadette Devlin, Michael Collins, Bobby Sands, Dan and Philip Bergen, and Michael Harrington, that these folks were alive and living in Portland, Oregon today, they would assert with us that rent control in Salem, that gun control in a land of active shooters, and impeachment against a fascist, racist, sexist president are finite achievable goals. We hope to see our newly-diverse City Council here in Lowly, Portland, Oregon, play a vital role in creating economic democracy in our world, not just more economic fascism under the Trump junta.
Thanks for coming in. Have any items been pulled from the consent agenda, Carla?
Yes, we've had 38. Item 38, full.
Very good. Please call the roll on the remainder of the consent agenda.
Ritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Hardesty?
Aye.
You daily?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The consent agenda is adopted. Item number 36, first time cert.
Authorize new construction financing in an amount not to exceed $4.5 million for construction of the North Williams Center, a 61-unit affordable housing project.
Colleagues, a pro post to the public testimony we just heard, I'm very proud to bring forward 60 additional units of affordable housing that's going to be added to the city's affordable housing stock. As you've heard me say on behalf of the Housing Bureau a number of times, this last year in 2018, we delivered a record number of affordable housing units to the city of Portland. We expect that in 2019, we will nearly double that. This is one of the first that we'll be undertaking this year. This project today will contribute to the overall northeast housing strategy, which the community brought forward to the city of Portland. The community requested this, and I want to particularly thank our partner, Multnomah County, in contributing the site for this development and Bridge Housing on their third affordable project here in the city of Portland. And with that, I'll turn it over. Shannon, are you kicking us off today?
I am.
Director Callahan.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Shannon Callahan of the Portland Housing Bureau. I am here this morning to ask for your approval for the construction financing of the North Williams Center, a new 61-unit development to be developed, as we've heard, by Bridge Housing. In the fall of 2015, the Housing Bureau, along with Home Forward and Multnomah County, released this property for development, and Bridge Housing was the winner of that development proposal. It has been working with the community and the Housing Bureau since then to bring this project to fruition. The North Williams Center is located on the corner of North Williams and Telemack. It will provide permanent affordable housing and homes to 195 new residents. I'm sorry, 194 new residents. The North Williams Center will provide deeply affordable homes for 40 households, households who make less than 30% of the median family income. Lease-up of the building will also be subject to the city's preference policy, which prioritizes families with generational ties to north and northeast Portland. It's the sixth of the city's rental properties to be moved forward into the construction phase or opened that are subject to the north and northeast preference policy. And the center will also provide 10 units of supportive housing for households who need the services to be successful in their housing and beyond. The Joint Office is working closely with both the Portland Housing Bureau and Bridge Housing to make this a reality, and I'd like to thank them for stepping in to offer both service and operating support to make sure that this building is successful and is home for 10 households moving off the street out of homelessness. Before I turn it over to the team at Bridge to say a few words, I'd just like to note that we expect construction to start this spring, actually in March of this year, and construction is expected to be complete by May of next year, welcoming 194 new residents into permanent affordable housing.
Shannon, before you turn it over, could you go back one slide?
Sure.
I just have to point this out. I mean, this is affordable housing. And look at that. I mean, that is architecturally, in my opinion, stunning. And I think it's great that we're not only doing the right thing here by way of very low-income people in our community, we're actually providing them an amazing place to call home. That looks great, and I just want to applaud our partners for that. Thank you.
Shannon, two questions.
Commissioner Fish.
First is, what was the secret sauce that allowed you to, in this development with 61 units, to set aside 10 units for supportive housing? Because that's both, in the aggregate, it's a big number, but as a percentage of the overall, it's a big number. So how were you able to accomplish that?
Well, there are 40 units in this building that are supported with longtime rent subsidy through vouchers. And so permanent supportive housing requires, you know, three basic pieces of funding to make it work. One is rent subsidies to make sure that we're buying down rents for the folks who need it the most, the very low-income folks, folks who may have zero or very little income. The second is making sure that we have operating support to make the building successful. When you have a number of individuals who require support services, it also usually requires additional operating support to the building by way of onsite resident managers or additional property management support. And thirdly, it's the service funding that comes presently from the Joint Office. And this building presented some unique opportunities with the fact that it had so many voucher units in it, and the Joint Office is able to program the additional operating support this building will need to be successful as well as providing the support services. So it's just the perfect mix of all three of the three-legged stool that we need to make permanent supportive housing work.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. I'm Kim McKay with Bridge Housing, and I'm very pleased to be here and...
Good morning, Kim. You could move that mic closer.
Closer? Okay. Is that better? So actually, I would just like to open it up to further questions that you guys may have, and I'm here with Dustin Furdin, who is our senior PM on the project. And I would say kudos to our staff for working very closely with the community over the last few years. We feel that we have a lot of support there, and it's been a very rewarding relationship to ensure that we have a project that is both beautiful but also will meet the needs of the immediate local community. So please, any questions you have, we're here to answer.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Kim, I have a question, which might seem like a strange question. There's one unregulated unit out of 61 units.
Why?
Why?
That's our manager unit.
Oh.
So rather than restrict it, it allows us...
Okay, that makes sense.
This is Bridge's third project, is that right?
Correct.
So my recollection, because I think I was the Housing Commissioner at the time, was the first one was in the Pearl District.
Correct.
And the second one you did was?
We have River Place under construction right now.
Which is under construction.
Correct.
So this is your third. And what particular, and I know Bridge does work up and down the coast, and you have quite a track record. What specific expertise does Bridge bring to managing the units, the 10 units of supportive housing, and also making sure that the people who are in deeply subsidized units feel welcome in the community?
Well, it's a great question, and I'm happy to say we have a lot of experience with mixed-income housing, which is basically what this is. Most communities that we're developing in now have a requirement that in addition to the affordable housing, up to 60% AMI, that we include a percentage, and it varies in every jurisdiction, of permanent supportive housing or special-needs housing or homeless housing. And so our management, we self-manage most of our properties and take that commitment and obligation very, very seriously. And so it is, as Shannon alluded to, we do underwrite to meeting the service needs of the special population, and it's strong management. So I would, you know, welcome all of you to come see both the properties we have in Portland, and if you're out of town, to come see some of the other mixed-income properties we have. But examples, you know, Parcel 3 has a number of PSH units. The Abigail doesn't, but we have a number of properties in the Bay Area where they're actually even heavier, you know, a much larger population, and they've been very successful.
And does Bridge currently have a physical presence here in Portland?
We do.
Have you opened an office?
We do. We have an office that's here in downtown, and we have a staff of four, actually five professional development staff. Our accounting staff is here, IT is here, and we're looking at bringing property management up into the market this year.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Very good. Public testimony on this item, Carla?
Yes, we have six people signed up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Should we say here or go?
No, you go ahead, and we might bring you back if there's follow-up questions based on testimony.
The first three, please come on up, are Edith Gillis, Lightning, and Shadrick Wilkins.
Good morning.
I'm hoping that you're feeling my love and commitment today, because I'm going to be here all day. What I want to say is, please, in your figuring of affordable rent, have it be the same percentages of income distribution in the city of Portland as in new multiple-unit housing. So if there are 100 units and 30% of the people in the city of Portland make under or have under $10,000 a year, have 1/3 of 1/12 of that be their monthly cap on rent, et cetera.
Edith, can I just make a comment? Thank you for that admonition. If we followed that logic in this project, we'd woefully underperform. And I just think we should acknowledge that 40 of the 60 units here are being set aside for people that make between 0 and 30% of median family income. So we are talking about people who are typically served by either Home Forward or by project-based sponsored units. So this greatly outperforms even the standard that you've articulated?
I misspoke. I meant to say a minimum of that low income being available.
Thank you. Good morning.
Yes, my name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Superhumanity XX1 PDX. Bridge, you're right on the mark. Very impressive work. You stayed in with the threshold of the 30% AMI and below for the 40 units. But what I really like about your project is that you also were sensitive to the square-footage size of the units, very livable units. And as you know, instead of going to these micro-units, people want to stay long-term in good-sized, square-footage units. I think you hit everything here. Very impressive work, and I hope to see you get many more contracts and projects. Now, speaking just for myself, not to Bridge directly, being a bridge loan, or construction loan, I'm sorry here, will that loan be repaid in the future? Again, some of the problems I have on these type of deals is I like to have a "do-on-sale" clause in the future, maybe to pay back this type of loan, even if it's 20 years in the future. I like to see that, and I know that's up for debate. Issue number two on the Multnomah County property, I want to have the city of Portland pay full fair-market value for that and to fund Multnomah County. I'm going to look at that. I'm going to contact CBRE. I'm going to have an appraisal done on that piece of land. I want Multnomah County to receive full value for that, again, for their services that they provide at Multnomah County. No discounts. Again, just for my own use, I like to see the overall price stated on these ordinances. I like to see the overall unit price. Again, the building looks fantastic. Everything I see here is within the parameters of the way it should be done. Again, on the sustainable housing units, I'd like to see a more detailed plan on how that will be paid for, where the sustainable money will come from to pay for that. And as you know, I'm projecting maybe 1,000 per month, per unit additional value price to that. Again, that's up for debate. I'd like to see the numbers. I'd like to understand the services provided to these people. But again, this looks very impressive. Get more contracts, keep up the good work.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Morning. Happy New Year.
You too. You too. Thank you very much.
I haven't spoken since Christmas. I believe that North Portland, northeast Portland, is the only place where homeless people or people who are disadvantaged can go. You did not make the Terminal 1 shelter. You have not yet built the Pearl District Shelter, which is right near my HUD apartment at Yards. I was going to volunteer. I'm very disappointed. When I was homeless in 2011, there was a mass medical thing at the Memorial Coliseum. Commissioner Novick mentioned the Memorial Coliseum as a mass place to put sheltered people. I agree. I'm a veteran. I'm supposed to, was supposed to protect this country and protect people who are sick or cold or whatever, and just the basement has a large area. The area of released resistance, you banged around right to Dream 2. Where you, did you put it? Right across the street from the Memorial Coliseum. Okay? I was born at Emmanuel Hospital, which is in North Portland, because my father was a low-income Nabisco employee. Yet, we didn't live there. We lived near the airport. There's a lot of racism in Portland, and I side with the fact that the best place to help low-income people is North Portland and nowhere else, because, again, you see people on the sidewalk, you see people on the street in tents, and you herd them into the north northeast area. And since people of color have been oppressed, they might have the sympathy for low-income white people. You don't see it from anybody else. So I like the Memorial Coliseum as a large shelter, since you failed to make anyone anyplace else. I agree with Commissioner Hardesty. There is a rule about yelling "fire" in a theater. I think people like Mr. Davis and Joel Walsh, this isn't a church. You don't say "fire" 50 times to make your point across. Even though we have freedom of speech, I think Mr. Davis and Joel Walsh should be banned. Ban from here for a month.
Excuse me. Excuse me. This is, no, this is not your call. You are not the presiding, excuse me. You're going to have to stop. We'll take, we'll take a read.
Dr. Hardesty, my clock. Come on.
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 So certainly, if somebody has a view here that's not popular, you have no right to cut them off. It's like yelling "fire" in a theater, which the Supreme Court deals with that.
I appreciate your being here. Whatever. Next three, please.
Are Maggie Stephen, I believe the last name is Long, and Mary Syke.
I see Mary Stephen there. Very good.
Long, maybe Lang, Stephen Lang on Lincoln, Southwest Lincoln.
Oh. Thank you, Senator.
I'm going to criticize here, and the reason I'm going to do that is because I see elderly people out on the street every day who are, who have Alzheimer's, dementia, are incontinent. I see bipolar people. I see people who have schizophrenia, and you're still going to warehouse them in shelters where there's all this environmental noise, and you're going to, the shelters are like a jail. The bathrooms are broken. The staff are like factory workers. They steal from the homeless, disabled people in there. And there are elderly homeless on the street who are incontinent and have Parkinson's, and they've been exited from their housing units, and they won't go into shelters because they get bullied and their stuff gets stolen. And none of these affordable housing units are going to take these people. They're cherry-picking the people who have the least disability and the most social security income, and that's who's going to get in there. And none of these people who've got mental health issues, who've got Parkinson's, Alzheimer's, who are incontinent, there's no supportive housing that's being built for them. You know, it's all, they're all warehoused in shelters that have human rights issues with noise, industrial noise, entertainment noise. They've got emphysema, they've got asthma, they've got, you know, all the mental health, you know, they're sick all the time. There's MRSA, bedbugs, lice. There's no laundry facilities in these shelters. There are no laundry facilities that work. I mean, it took me four hours to do one load of laundry because the spinner in the one washer and the one dryer, the spinner doesn't work, and the dryer takes two hours to dry one load of laundry. And how many hundreds of people are in that building who have to compete for that one washer and one dryer, and then they have a scheduling? So, you know, this affordable housing thing is for people who are able-bodied. It's not going to help anybody who's got, you know, supportive needs, issues. It's not going to help anyone who's out on the street and living in a tent and refusing to go into a shelter and disabled.
So Maggie, let me just stipulate what you said so we can talk about this particular project. This particular project actually includes 10 supportive units. So it is for exactly...
I mean, 10 is like a drop in the bucket of an ocean.
For those, for those 10 individuals, it means the world. And I take what you're saying as a challenge to scale it up, do more of these kinds of projects, find the resources to make it happen, and I think we're in agreement on that.
When I say supportive housing, I think there are two types of people when I say that. There are types of people who can't make it through the night and need 24-hour care, and there are those who can make it through the night and need day services every day. And you're not housing those people.
Well, we actually are, but thank you. Appreciate your testimony and your perspective.
I disagree. I see them on the streets every day.
And it's your right to disagree. Thank you. Good morning.
My name's Mary Syke. As you know, I've been here for the last two years almost every week, and I've often spoken in support of the affordable housing projects. I live in one of the projects, the Sitka. In fact, when I was looking at the pictures of this new project, I was thinking, gee, this looks a lot like the Sitka. I do want to, with all due respect, I do want to kind of correct some things that Maggie was talking about. Shelters are temporary emergency methods, and we can build all the shelters in the world, but if we don't start building the affordable housing that we need to have a place for people to transition into, it's not going to make any difference what we do in terms of the emergency shelter. I would encourage people, I've said this before, the term "affordable housing" is, a lot of people don't really understand what it is. This is a Section 42 tax credit housing, and I'd encourage people to go look this up and understand how this works. It's income-restricted. I would also correct some of the things that Maggie said. The building I live in is probably 90% disabled. People on Social Security disability, myself on Social Security, a lot of people on SSI, $700 a month, living in units that are clean, comfortable, and affordable in the realm of their income. We need more of this, and I want to applaud the city and the county for what they've been doing for the last two years in really pressing forward with more affordable housing. It is kind of interesting, Mayor Wheeler, when you said, when you commented about the architecturally pleasing design. I think one thing I would like to suggest, Bridge Housing, I'm so excited, when they came to Portland and built the Abigail, when you see what they've done in other cities across the country, it's pretty phenomenal, the work that they've done and how they've made their focus, affordable housing. I would like to suggest that maybe, and perhaps they already do this, that they form sort of an advisory group of people living in affordable housing and get some feedback from them about where there could be some improvements.
It's a great idea.
Yeah. One of the things that all of the units that, in our building and in other buildings around, we don't have air conditioning, and it's really oppressive sometimes. And if you don't have $600 to go buy a portable air conditioning unit, you're suffering in our now hotter, hotter, hotter summers. I'd suggest, you know, look at putting the portable units in. I also want to give a shout-out to Bridge Housing. I want to thank them. When they were building, before they started building the Abigail, I contacted them, and they voluntarily agreed to scrap their plans to use the impact hammer and use the auger drill. And I hope that they will continue to do the same with other projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. We appreciate your perspective, as always. Thanks for coming in. Does that complete public testimony, Carla?
Yeah, if Stephen Long isn't here, that would be all.
Mr. Long, are you here somewhere? Very good. Please call the roll.
Fritz.
The comment was made, this is a drop in the bucket kit, and I always think of, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. And that's, each unit makes a difference to the person who's going to be in it and to the people who'll be in it for the next 99 years. So congratulations for this project. It's really great. Aye.
I'm very pleased to support this. A Bridge has demonstrated that they're a good community partner. There's a good leverage. That is, the public resources here is leveraging lots of other funds from other sources to allow us to stretch the dollar. And then, I don't remember the last time we had a project come before us where the units were so deeply subsidized. We should give a special shout-out to Home Forward, because these project-based vouchers would not happen without them, but they allow us to keep 40 of the 61 units at below 30% of MFI. So we're meeting really where the crushing need is in our community, and I applaud the developer for finding a way to finance this project. Thanks to the Housing Bureau for bringing this forward. Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to support it. Aye.
Hardesty.
Aye.
U Daily?
Well, I'm very pleased to see this project moving forward. It advances two top priorities for the city. One is increasing our affordable housing stock, and two is adopting sustainable building practices that are going to help us meet our climate goals moving forward. I also want to thank Bridge City for not sacrificing aesthetics and quality. This is a really good-looking building, like the mayor pointed out, and in fact, I'd say it's a more attractive building than many of the market and luxury-rate buildings going up in that neighborhood. Thank you, Mary Wheeler, the Portland Housing Barrow, Bearings Multi-Family, US Bank, Metro Bridge, Meyer Memorial Trust, Prosper Portland, and Oregon Housing and Community Services for all your work on this, and of course, Multnomah County for contributing the site. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
That list, Commissioner U Daily just listed? Thank you to everybody on that list. This is truly an exceptional partnership. This is just one more demonstration of what we can get done when we all pull in the same direction. Thank you, Director Callahan, for your leadership in particular. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you, everyone. Next item, Time Certain 37. We're right on schedule. Very good.
Accept District Coalition Plan for Fiscal Year 2019-20 Budget for Equitable Distribution of Resources.
Commissioner U Daily.
Thank you, Mayor. The city funds seven neighborhood coalition offices that serve as one connection point between the city and its residents. Funding inequities between district coalitions have been a longstanding issue, complicated by factors such as the fact that two of our coalition offices are city-run, while the other five are independent nonprofits. The audit of then Office of Neighborhood Involvement identified this long, unaddressed issue as one that needed to be urgently remedied. I'm pleased to introduce today's report to share the steps we've taken and the direction we'll go in the coming years. I would like to call up Sukri, Director of the Office of Community and Civic Life, for a presentation. Welcome, Director Re.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Again, my name is Sukri, and I serve as Director for the Office of Community and Civic Life, and it's an honor to be, for myself, to present for the first time to Commissioner Hardesty and this new council. Today, you'll hear from more than just myself. We have a team that will come after me, and they, and our combined presentation is to report on the actions taken in response to the budget note in the fiscal year 2018/19 budget, directing the Bureau to work with relevant stakeholders to develop a methodology to equitably distribute existing resources among the neighborhood coalitions without additional funding. I will speak to the actions that we took in fiscal year 2018/19 and the factors shaping our discussion for fiscal year 19 and 20. Victor Salinas will share the impact of distributed resources to East Portland Community Office. Adam Lyons and Christina Esteemay will speak to how district coalition offices are actually working together toward equitable outcomes, which is the focus of our continuing conversations about distribution of resources in fiscal year 1920 and beyond. And Frida Christopher, a member of the Citywide Budget Advisory Committee, will share her reflections on the budget note progress. For my portion, I refer to the slide deck. Maybe I need to go to the other end of the aisle. Is it, will it go up? Wonderful. So, it may be surprising to some that this issue has been studied for nearly, repeatedly for nearly 20 years without resolution, and it was in the audit that Commissioner U Daily mentioned of the Community and Neighborhood Involvement Center for the Bureau in 2016. The auditor wrote that during the fiscal year 2016/17 budget process, the office's budget advisory committee developed core values that state that the office would not take money from one coalition or organization to fund another, and so would not attempt to resolve inequities until city council opted to provide more funding for all community engagement programs. The auditor noted that this approach effectively locked disparities into place. So then, again, during the budget process, we were directed to come up with a plan for implementation to address this. And although the budget note referred to an implementation timeline of fiscal year 1920, we heeded the comments of Frida Christopher and others during the budget review process to take steps, even if initial and incremental, to remedy this immediately. In previous years, the funding question had largely been shaped in two ways: the distribution of resources among districts, particularly to East Portland, and then as compared to other regions, and then using a per-person measure to gauge funding equity. We will share with you the actions we took this year, 1819, that resulted in increasing per-person investment in East Portland, and then the factors shaping 19 and 20 and the change in our focus of consideration. In our proposed 1819 budget, we requested $201,980 in additional ongoing general funds and one-time resources for East Portland. The rationale was to increase the FTE from 2.275, three part-time positions, to 4.0FTE, and for additional programming, for additional programming and for rent. That year, last year, council approved $30,000 in additional ongoing general funds. So the Bureau was committed, however, to increase the FTE to a more appropriate level, and so we redirected $120,865 in our budget to ensure at least 3.7FTE for East Portland. So this included redirecting within our own existing general fund budget $44,388 from the Civic Life budget to East Portland, toward East Portland, and then redirecting $76,477 from the district coalition grants, again, toward East Portland's favor. And in addition, the Office of Commissioner U Daily was able to provide additional one-time support, $6,861, to all coalition offices to help with this rebalancing. This slide is a little bit complicated. We don't necessarily, I'm just going to walk through with you the numbers presented. So in the first column, you see the name of the coalitions that we are talking about. There are seven. Two of them are city staff, five are community staffed and independent, 501(c)(3). In the second and third columns, you'll see the base funding in fiscal years 17 and 18, and then 1819. Those are columns two and three. And then, if you skip to column three, four, five, additional one-time funding from Commissioner U Daily's office, and then if you, then you go to column seven, you'll see the percent change. So between, compared to fiscal year 17 and 18, the rebalancing was equivalent about 0.58 of 1% for all coalitions. So 6/10ths of 1% was rebalanced in order to achieve the 3.7FTE. Then, on top of that, each coalition receives additional dollars for neighborhood small grants, and then so you see the total in the second to last column of what the total amount invested in the neighborhood district coalitions. You see also the bottom line is $2.5 million as a combined program investment. So the result is that in this year, the East Portland Community Office receives $3.12 per person. That's an increase of 52% from fiscal year 1718 levels, and that is the same rate as Southeast Uplift, and Southeast Uplift is $3.14 per person. And then you note that East and South Districts serve roughly 157,000 and 162,000 community members respectively. That's about half the total population of Portland, and their investments represent about 40% of the total district budget, coalition budget. For reference, the highest per-person rate is $5.48 for central northeast neighbors to serve about 53,000 community members, and in terms of the range of disparity in 1617, 1718, that disparity range was three to one, and we've closed that gap a little bit. Now it's two to one, but it's not quite closed. So in fiscal year 19 and 20, we, so district coalitions and civic life teams began meeting in October and November of 2018 to think about the approach for 19 and 20. While we acknowledge that the steps we took in 2018 were important and necessary for steps, there are limits to using per-person measures to determine equity. We also felt like we needed to ask a more fundamental question. If we don't know what equitable outcomes we seek to deliver, then no methodology for distribution of resources will achieve those ends. So thus, we're asking some different questions, some harder questions of ourselves for any dollar that's invested throughout the Bureau. What are the equitable outcomes we want for all Portlanders? And then what would that take? Bureau, community, and citywide equity will not be achieved by one program or one Bureau alone or one effort alone. And then what is the contribution or value that district coalitions can uniquely provide? And then how would we invest existing and future resources toward that end? While this turned out to be a 20-year nut to crack... While this turned out to be a twenty-year nut to crack, we don't believe it's going to take twenty years to make progress going forward. However, we want to remind council, this is a multi-year iterative discussion. We don't have the answers for you to this question as of right now, but we are starting that conversation in a more deliberate way. For fiscal year nineteen-twenty, the district coalition leaders and civic life have agreed to do several things, is to maintain district coalition investments at 99 percent of the fiscal year eighteen-nineteen level. We're also going to focus on identifying equitable outcomes within the Bureau's long-term goals and within our mission. We want to start new conversations about developing shared efforts and resources that would allow us to explore new models for our work. We also need to develop a shared analysis, and consequently, a collective and coordinated ability to serve communities that are displaced and migrating between different parts of the city. The reality is, is that we need to start working across district borders as well as within them, and that we are uniquely positioned as a cohort to do this. And to articulate the differences between city and community staff offices, which do have a bearing on funding levels. Obviously, equity is not achieved through siloed strategies or siloed thinking. The issues of concern transcend district borders, and we need to address them collectively. One area you will hear more about from our panel is in the area of housing affordability and houselessness, as an example of what that could look like. And I want to conclude with saying that if we only stayed, and we need different measures to under, to gauge progress. If we stayed only with per-person measures and focused only on districts, we would see funding shifting from district to district, and that would largely be reactive and chasing symptoms of displacement and migration. And we would not necessarily be funding the district coalition partners to develop the shared advocacy, policy, and system strategies to benefit all Portlanders. So we will, we must, start thinking differently about this conversation going forward. And I would like to, with your permission, invite Victor, Adam, Christina, and Frida to the table to present their portion.
May I just ask some clarification questions?
Commissioner Fritz, do that.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. A couple of things I'm just not clear about. Does the East Portland Action Plan money, is that included in the allocation?
That is not included.
Okay. So that's something to think about. And then, could you go back to that table, please?
Yes.
So I'm confused, because it says that the coalitions are getting 2,000, 4,000 cuts. Those numbers in the change add up to 18,000, and yet, there's 160,000 increase in East Portland, and that's different from 120,000. So I'm just very confused as to what this table means.
Sorry for, this is not the clearest presentation. So that includes also the 30,000 from council, the rebalancing, the 76,000 rebalancing, that includes also then the 44,800-some dollars from the Bureau.
So the 76,000, how was that divided up amongst the coalitions?
So the 76,000, we actually consider several methodologies, including a methodology that was developed by a consultant many years ago. We chose not to go that way. We chose simply to say, what is the proportion of this district coalition's budget within the total budget, and then that will be their percentage of the rebalancing. So for example, if Southeast Uplift is 20 percent of the total coalition budget, then they took 20 percent of that total rebalancing burden, which was 20 percent of the $77,000.
So the 20 percent of 77,000 is not 4,000. So how much was Southeast Uplift cut?
In the end, the actual change from the base fundings also is over here. The actual change for the base funding is in the middle of the column, column six, and that's the actual change that they experienced, because there was also one-time additional support from Commissioner Yu Daily's office.
I'm confused.
Do you, maybe, after this presentation, if we can sit with the numbers and with the offices to answer your questions more completely? Would that be useful?
Yeah, or maybe when the coalitions talk, they can tell us how much they got cut.
Yes. Well, these would be the numbers that we actually got translated into the grant agreements.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned that there's a difference between city-paid staff that works in a coalition office and folks who are not city staff. Could you talk a little bit more about the impact on whether it's city staff or whether it's community members with the revisions that you made?
The impact on community members? The distinction of city staff versus community staff offices that I like to make there is is that we, as a city, have policies that we adhere to. For example, if there's a COLA, whereas for community-based coalitions, we don't get to, we don't tell them if they need to give a COLA or where their retirement contribution is, so they set their own investments for staffing, benefits, et cetera, independently. And so if you look at the actual, if you were to pull their 990s, for example, and look at their staffing rates and their benefits, et cetera, and you compare them with the city, you would see a difference. So we are not saying that the difference means that there are different outcomes. We actually need to explore that further. We do believe, though, that it, there's a difference in the personnel and benefit cost that's clear, and we need to acknowledge that, because that is part of, a dollar, a dollar to any district coalition is, should be, the best judgment comes from that district coalition's governance body. And for the city, that is city council. For community, that's a different body, and we see that there are different investments being made, so.
Suk, I just want to say thank you. It's amazing that it's taken twenty years for anybody to attempt to tackle this, and I'm sure there's been a lot of pushback, because, you know, people like status quo for some reason. So thank you for your work on this. I know it was not an easy task.
Yes. And the credit goes to city council, our budget, citywide budget advisory council as well, as well as our coalition partners who are implementing the results. With your permission, may we invite the others to the table?
Yes, please. So we have Victor Salinas, Adam Lyons. Victor is from East Portland Community Office, Adam Lyons from Northeast Coalition of Neighborhoods, Christina Esteme from Southeast Uplift, and Frida Christopher, who serves on our Citywide Budget Advisory Committee, as well as many other things. But perhaps you, oh, there's Frida. Hello, welcome.
I snuck in late.
I do that sometimes, too. Welcome, everybody, and please state your name before beginning your presentation for the record.
Well, good morning. Mayor Wheeler.
Morning.
Commissioner Yu Daily, Commissioner Fritz, Commissioner Fish. Happy New Year, and thank you for having us here today. I am here to speak on the impacts and the outcomes and equity impacts of the redistribution and funding for fiscal year eighteen-nineteen within the seven district coalition offices. Here's some context that paints a picture of where the East Portland Community Office, formerly the East Portland Neighborhood Office, had been over the last five years. East Portland staff have been responding to increased requests from support from many underserved and underrepresented community groups, mainly communities of identity, people of color, immigrants, refugees, and low-income families, renters. The increased request for staff time and resources was not sustainable at the previous funding level, with the limited staffing availability of 2.275 FTE. So we were not able to adequately serve both the neighborhood associations and the community groups we work with. Seeing a need for additional staff support at the EPCO office, East Portlanders advocated for increased funding for the EPCO, for EPCO to better meet community needs. The increased funding, thanks to Commissioner Yu Daily, council, our Bureau Director Sukri, was able to help us better, better serve the community and better meet civic life's goals of supporting healthy, connected, and equitable communities. Here are some examples of how this has impacted our work. Recently, one of our neighborhood associations, the Glen Fair Neighborhood Association, had become inactive for multiple reasons. And through staff and community efforts and outreach, we were able to help the neighborhood association not only become active again, but is now a multicultural and multilingual neighborhood association, the board, that is, one of the first our district areas. We've been able to use funding from the accommodations fund to be able to help them through translation interpretation within their meetings and their organizational needs. One example is, the board was reviewing their proposed bylaws, and one of the member, one of the board members with limited English proficiency was having difficulty participating in the conversation about a proposed amendment. EPCO staff was able to provide support to the board member in their native language to understand the topic. As a result, the board was able to bridge the language barrier and adopt their new bylaws. The takeaway from this is that increased financial support helps EPCO recruit highly competent, highly multilingual staff to support our neighborhood associations and our community groups. Another example is a recent cooperative work between CNN and EPCO, in which a small community group, culturally-specific organization, the Somali Women's Coalition of Portland, came to EPCO seeking assistance on an application for Central Northeast Neighborhood Coalition small grants. The project was a series of educational workshops on civic engagement for Somali women, and their community members live both in the EPCO service area and the CNN service area. As you know, our communities don't live by district areas, by geographical areas. You know, we live across neighborhood boundaries. So the, the community member, as I said, the community members lived across both areas. This demonstrates the communities were, would be served across jurisdictional boundaries and therefore require the collective support of multiple coalition offices. Angela Privadelli, our new EPCO Grants Coordinator, helped review application and provide guidance for the community member. And additionally, the community member knew to grant, was new to grant writing, learned that they would also need a fiscal sponsor to successfully submit their application, which our nonprofit partner, the East Portland Neighbors, was able to provide that fiscal sponsorship. As a result, EPCO was able to link the community, like I said, to the East Portland Neighborhood Office to provide that fiscal sponsorship. The takeaway is, in working collectively, this community group was able to apply for a grant from one coalition office while receiving the technical assistance they needed from another coalition office, all in support of their project of civic engagement for Somali women in Portland. In closing, the East Portland Community Office greatly appreciates the support for the increased funding in fiscal year eighteen-nineteen. We want to thank Commissioner Yu Daily and the rest of council, our Bureau Director Sukri, and the support from North Portland Neighborhood Services, Northeast Coalition of Neighbors, Southeast Uplift, Southeast Uplift Neighborhood Coalition, Central Northeast Neighbors, Neighbors West Northwest, Southwest Neighbors Incorporated. And we look forward to partnering across the city with other coalition offices to support about equitable outcomes in supporting neighborhood associations and underserved, under-resourced community groups in their community building and civic engagement activities. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Adam Lyons from Northeast Coalition of Neighborhoods. Though district coalitions were established based on geography to find its neighborhoods, we recognize that many of the significant issues we face as a city defy the artificial lines drawn over forty years ago. We understand that the ability to even identify with the neighborhood has increasingly been an entitlement for those who own homes, as rents have skyrocketed and communities have been displaced. As a result, district coalitions have adapted our programming, partnerships, and planning to include constituencies and issues beyond solely the neighborhood system. Over the past several years, district coalitions have worked on many projects around homelessness and affordable housing. In 2016, coalitions partnered together to create a community development strategy for neighborhoods to work with the houseless community to identify safe sleep areas in our districts. This plan was what created the Alternative Shelter Specialist position, which now sits in both civic life and the joint office. This position has been a huge benefit in coordinating rest area, village, and shelter siding, as well as communicating information out to the community. Both Southeast Uplift and Northeast, can you guys hear me? I feel like I'm cutting out. Okay.
Oh, you're good.
Both Southeast--
Could I make one, just like six inches is sort of the ideal. These are sort of funky, Mike.
Okay. How's that?
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
All right. Let's get back to it.
Breathe, breathe.
Breathe, thank you. Both Southeast Uplift and Northeast Coalition of Neighborhoods have been involved in welcoming Right to Dream Two to the east side of the Willamette River. This has been a long process, but with the help of many stakeholders, neighborhood and houseless advocates, Right to Dream Two has been successfully located in the Lloyd District. Coalitions have partnered with Central City Concerns Clean Start PDX Program to create enhanced services in our inner-city neighborhoods. Clean Start PDX is a vocational training program that works with folks with lived experience of homelessness who help provide trash and sanitation to pop-up camps, and after about eighteen months, usually get job placement. From a communications perspective, coalitions have been very active regarding houselessness and affordable housing. Much of our online, as well as our print, and mailed newspapers, which I have one here in case you haven't seen it, have been focused on daylighting the humanitarian crisis and trying to explain a very complicated civic challenge. Additionally, we have held many community meetings and town halls to discuss the housing crisis. We've created videos like Five Things to Know About Houselessness, and recently created a whimsical map of how affordable housing works, featuring an illustrated bunny and an owl. Looking to the future, all seven district coalitions remain committed to addressing issues that affect all of our residents. Houselessness and affordable housing are only two of many complex challenges that we face as a growing and changing city. Our coalitions believe that all Portlanders working together can change the narrative and move the dial on many pressing issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. My name is Christina Esteme, and I'm the Operations Manager at Southeast Uplift. To summarize, the seven district coalitions collectively cover all 95 neighborhoods of Portland. Coalitions have been an important infrastructure for facilitating communication and action between Portlanders and city government. In the nearly 45 years since the district coalition system was formed, Portland has dramatically changed. For example, the population of East Portland has grown, thus the needs of communities have changed. Whereas at one time, coalitions might have focused on land use issues, we now serve diverse communities, seeking community involvement in different ways and in different languages, as Victor Salinas from East Portland Community Office just described. Whether coalitions are offering technical support to incubate community projects, helping people understand what is happening in their city through collaborative trainings, creating platforms for people to strategize towards creative solutions, such as described by Adam Lyons from NECN, we seek to increase civic engagement and to foster an inclusive and caring community. District coalitions are actively working with Sukri and the Office of Community and Civic Life to identify and define equitable outcomes. District coalitions in the Bureau want to ensure that resources are directed in meaningful and impactful ways. Working together, we are adapting the services of district coalitions to be more inclusive and accessible. Participating in city government is a daunting prospect for many community members, and the infrastructure of district coalitions provides a local and less formal interface for grassroots community involvement. District coalitions are on the ground, working together towards a more connected, inclusive, and accessible Portland. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name's Frida Christopher. I sit on the Citywide Budget Advisory Commission, East Portland Action Plan, being co-chair of their Housing Subcommittee, as well as a member of Civic Engagement Subcommittee. I'm also chair of the David Douglas School Board, so I have a broad perspective of East Portland. At last year's budget work sessions, I mentioned the equity issue in the coalitions and the audit report that was given. I applaud the director's efforts to reallocate the level of funding of limited resources to try to start to address this. I don't believe that it's, this has been going on for over 20 years. It's not going to be solved in one year. I have to agree with the director in that. I also agree with the direction of looking at-- I also agree with the direction of looking at the outcomes and how coalitions are handled. We, I really respect history, having been on the David Douglas School Board for 28 years, and we often, I often say, what have we done in the past? Not to continue to do it because it's been done in the past and that's the way we do things, but to look at what was successful and what is not. We need, our city has changed, and so has our neighborhoods. They have evolved tremendously. And so we need to look at historically, okay, we've done this in the past, but what can we do differently? So I applaud the fact that the civic life is looking at that. I want to share a couple examples of that change. Just yesterday, I was in three different meetings. East, David Douglas District has changed dramatically in the last 20 years. And we have decided this year, our superintendent is doing listening sessions. In the morning, I sat in on a session that was strictly done in Spanish. It's really, it brings to light how our minorities often don't understand what's going on in a meeting when you don't have a translator translating it. In the afternoon, it was a group of Somali parents, and the same thing, it's funny, it takes a little bit to get them talking, but once they start talking, it's hard to keep up with the, someone translating for us. And then in the evening, I met with civic engagement, which we have Arabic, Russian, Latino members there with translators, and they are concerned about their ability to be involved in our community and our city. They want to. There are many voters that want to vote, but they can't read the ballot and understand it. So these are things we need to look at. I know voting goes into the county and the state issues handling that, but these were things that were brought up. In conclusion, I do appreciate the city taking a look at community engagement and seeing what we can do to change it, especially in the budgeting process. And with the Director Suk's leadership, I know they're going to be looking at how we can change overall how our communities work and our neighborhoods can be involved. I personally, speaking with many of these minority communities, they want to be involved. We just have to learn how involvement in those areas are different because of their backgrounds. Galena from the Russian community made it very apparent. You talk to them, you communicate with them, and you get them involved in different ways, and you have to understand that before you can get them involved. But I do appreciate the efforts that are being pushed forward.
Commissioner Fritz, thank you, Frida.
Thank you all for your presentation. I'd just like to ask the district coalition representatives, how much was Northeast Neighbors and how much was Southeast Uplift cut? What was the dollar figure?
If I remember correctly, I think it was right around 5K.
I'm going to refer to our executive director for the exact figure.
Hi, I'm Molly Mayo, executive director at Southeast Uplift. And I believe, to clarify the question, the district coalitions usually get around a 3% cost of living adjustment, and that adjustment was not awarded last contract year. That money was earmarked as well, I think, to be reallocated to East Portland. So whereas Southeast Uplift in the 1718 fiscal year had roughly a contract with City of Portland for $484,000, that's approximate, the most recent contract was 480, which is roughly a $4,000 cut. But as I understand, historically, the expectation would have been that there would have been a 3% cost of living increase. So altogether, that was around $18,500 that Southeast Uplift might have anticipated that we did not receive. That's my understanding.
So that's the numbers in the table. I then don't understand how we get to 160,000. But my further follow-up question is, what was the impact on your services of that cut?
In terms of Southeast Uplift, we are, we do represent a large geographic area, and so proportionately, we are considered one of the lesser funded coalitions. However, because we are actually a larger coalition with six staff and a larger budget, we were able to successfully absorb that $4,000 cut just through, you know, economic measures. So I think that cut actually impacted the smaller coalitions much more.
And did you give cost of living to your staff?
I did not give cost of living adjustments to my staff at the beginning of this fiscal year. No, I did not.
Was that colleagues in the past?
The impact is on staff pay.
Right. And they already get paid less than the city-run offices.
Yeah.
So just from my newer colleagues in the past, we had said that if city employees get cost of living, then our contract employees should be able to as well. Thank you. That clarifies the numbers. Thank you very much.
Oh, could I ask one more question before you leave? Thank you. What is the, my understanding of Southeast Uplift also has the ability to raise money outside of the money they get from the city. So what is your overall budget?
Our overall budget is not much larger than the city grant. The city grant, apparently, again, I'm relatively new to this system, so I've learned as I've gone along, but these, these district coalitions that are technically 501(c)(3) nonprofits literally grew up hand in hand with City of Portland government. They never existed separately as a more traditionally functioning 501(c)(3). So Southeast Uplift does have the ability to engage in fundraising. We do rent our, some offices in our building and also charge a very small conference room space that maybe contributes maybe $20,000 a year to our budget. But I'm coming from a nonprofit background and was at first shocked why these 501(c)(3)'s are not engaged in more fundraising.
Right.
And the reason, it's, it's a very interdependent relationship with city government, like Southeast Uplift actually started as a government office. So as we do look to the future, and of course, everyone is, you know, has a, on their radar the fact that nonprofits can and probably should be fundraising, you know, especially as times change.
Right.
Again, that will be a step-by-step learning process for district coalitions that are nonprofits, if we go in that direction.
Thank you.
Very good. Any further questions? I'll entertain a-
May I move the report?
We have a, Commissioner Fritz has one question first.
Oh, I thought we were, oh, we're not taking testimony. It's a report. Okay, excuse me. You can carry on. Thank you.
I move the report. Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner Fish. We have a second from Commissioner Hardesty. That's funny to us for just our own personal reasons. Please call the roll.
Fish?
Thank you, Director, for an excellent presentation. Thanks to our honored guests. Frida, you go to a lot of meetings.
Yeah.
We may have to do an intervention. I, I do think at some point, we should pull out the, we should look more holistically at all the different ways we support neighborhoods, and I think it's a fair point to include-
Thank you.
East Portland Action Plan and the budget for that, because that was a, one of our earlier efforts to try to do some equity and some equalization. And I think Frida, you've been a great voice in support of what we've accomplished through the East Portland Action Plan. But it's taken 20 years for us to get to this point. This report gives us a roadmap of some of the decisions that we're going to be making through our budget process and through policymaking. Commissioner Yu Daily, thank you for bringing this forward, and I'm pleased to vote aye.
Hardesty?
I also think this is excellent work and is long, long overdue. I was very happy to hear that EPAP would not be impacted by the changes that had taken place. I do want to put on the record that I absolutely think that our value of if city employees get raises, then our contract employees should also be receiving those cost of living increases. Very good work. I know this is only the beginning, and I look forward to working with Suk and the neighborhood offices to realize our new vision of what neighborhood engagement and involvement looks like. Thank you. I vote aye.
Yu Daily?
Thank you, everyone, for being here today and for participating. I want, I do agree with some of the concerns raised by my colleagues, I, but I think that the fact, the COLA issue, the, the impact to staff is more of an argument for the city needing to increase funding for these programs, and perhaps for the neighborhood offices to do a little fundraising of their own. It is not an argument against making, creating a more equitable distribution of existing funds. And I'd also like to say that EPAP and EPCNO, although they both begin with EP and serve East Portland, are two very distinct organizations, and that I'm willing to concede that perhaps EPAP should be calculated in this larger, larger equation of how equitably we're serving East Portland, but I am not willing to decrease their budgets. And I'll just leave it at that, because it's a complicated, it's a complicated undertaking. But they are distinct, they serve different purposes, and EPAP has been working with the same budget for the last decade. EPCNO could not offer comparable kind of supports and services to East Portland without an increase. So there's that. Today's report makes it clear that there's no one formula or approach that gets us to equity. However, I'm confident that we're asking the right questions and appreciate everyone's willingness to consider a new way of doing business. There are two truths I want to highlight. Change is hard, even when we want it. I've started saying, one of my catchphrases is, everyone wants change, but nobody wants to change. And that might be an explanation for why it's taken us 20 years to get here. I want to be sure to acknowledge and share my appreciation for every district coalition office and for the hardworking staff for stepping up to take, to make this important move forward towards one of our shared goals, which is ensuring equitable access and allocation of services for East Portland. And two, we will never get to better outcomes if we don't define what they are. So I appreciate that we're moving past the per-person measure, which we all know does not get us to equity when we have one population that has been historically underserved and underrepresented for decades and decades relative to the others. And we need to start thinking more systematically about ways to improve our services and reach our goals of true equity for all Portlanders. Finally, a few thank yous, I want to, and a welcome. I want to welcome Shook, not Suk, just to be clear, Shook Arif Dijanov, our civic engagement coordinator, who'll be working with the coalition offices to the city, and congratulate him on organizing his first council presentation. So welcome and thank you to Shook.
Nicely done. Welcome.
I also want to give special thanks to Diane Riley and Director Sukri for helping us tackle these big issues. Your leadership and vision are appreciated and clearly reflected in the steps we've taken already to get better outcomes for all Portlanders. I vote aye.
Wheeler?
Well, I suspected this was not going to be an easy conversation, based on the conversation the city council had during the budget session last year, and taking note of the fact that this had been discussed by several previous councils, and then they overtly chose not to take action. And so that is a signal to us that there were no easy solutions here. And of course, when we're talking about equity, that means sometimes making room for others to step up, and in some very specific cases, it also required some of our coalition partners to willingly take a reduction in resources. I want to thank you for how you did this. I want to thank you for how you handled it. I don't think there's ever a perfect approach, but I can't think of a better approach than this right now, in terms of actually living up to the equity goals that we stated during the budget process last year. Commissioner Yu Daily, I want to thank you. What was somewhat overlooked in this report was the fact that you helped fill the gap with your own office budget, and I want to acknowledge that. You contributed one-time-only resources to help limit the reductions in some of our coalition partners' budgets, and I think that spoke to your personal commitment to making sure that this was done right. And I want to thank all of our coalition partners. You're obviously not in it for the money, but the services you provide are so critically important to the community, and I just want to take this opportunity, since you're here, to thank you. So obviously, I vote aye. The report's accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, I'd like to, we're going to take up items 40 and 41 next, but I understand there's a number of amendments, so I'd like to take a five-minute break so I can make sure I understand all the amendments that are coming forward and how to sequence them. We'll take a five-minute recess. We'll take a five minute recess. Back in session. Carla, the next items are items 40 and 41. Could you please read them together?
Item 40, authorize Bureau of Human Resources to adopt system for merit-based pay increases for nonrepresented city employees. And direct Bureau of Human Resources to develop a recommended system for setting compensation when making hiring decisions for council consideration. And item 41, increase the salary ranges for several Portland city laborer classifications.
Colleagues, just some brief introductory comments. We all value the employees of the city of Portland. We want to ensure employees who are doing comparable work receive equitable pay. Adopting and implementing a citywide merit increase system is critical to establishing consistent practices throughout the city of Portland. Utilizing a consistent system will permit us to consider merit as one of the bona fide factors in setting compensation under the new Oregon Pay Equity Law. This resolution and the following ordinance, item 41, which I'll discuss in a moment, helps to ensure the city remains in compliance with the amendments to the Oregon Pay Equity Act. And with regard to item number 40, one which increases the salary ranges for several of Portland city laborer classifications, again, the stated value here is that the city of Portland is committed to pay equity. The Portland city laborers has approximately 370 employees classified within 28 different classifications that are doing similar work to employees covered by the DCTU, otherwise the District Council of Trade Union. Employees in those 28 classifications are paid differently based on prior collective bargaining agreements. The ordinance, item number 41, changes the salary rates of the PCL classifications to create parity with the DCTU classifications. The reason I was out of the room a moment ago is there are a number of amendments to this, and I'd like to put the amendments on the table first, if my colleagues have no objections to that.
Sure.
With that, then, Commissioner Fritz, why don't we put your amendments, your amendment on the table first, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This was distributed yesterday in the Tuesday memo. There is one slight change in the proposal, proposed amendments, because it's been brought to my attention by the mayor that the word temporary has a specific legal meaning in the city of Portland. And I was not intending to make it a particular timeline. I know the Bureau of Human Resources has a pileup going. So under the now therefore be resolved, the Bureau of Human Resources is directed to adopt for up to one year administrative rule merit system for merit-based pay, and the rest of it is the same. And then add a be it further resolved that after a standard HR administrative rule comment period and prior to expiration of the temporary administrative rule, the Bureau of Human Resources will return to council for final approval of a system for merit-based pay increases for nonrepresented employees. And, and then strike the be it further resolved that once adopted, the merit system will be binding city policy, because we're not doing that just yet. We can do that next time.
I second that. So that is now on the table. Commissioner Udaley, I understand you have, very good. Commissioner Udaley, I understand you have an amendment as well.
Yes, I have four amendments. And before I read them, I'll just want to thank Director Summers McGee and HR, there you are, scanning the whole office, and City Attorney's Office for their swift action on this issue. Pay equity is obviously something that we all care about deeply and believe in. We had to take, we had to act fast to avoid some very undesirable outcomes, but in doing that, I didn't have quite enough time to really dig into the issues. And so I'm offering these amendments today as a result. I have some concerns with merit-based pay. One is that it is subjective, even though I think HR has come up with a great tool. It does still, it is still a subjective measure. It could eventually lead us back to pay inequity, and it's hard to budget for. And I'm just, I'm really concerned about the impact to our, the immediate impact to our budget and moving forward, what continuing to give merit-based pay on top of COLA might mean for some of the bureaus. So these are my amendments. Amendment number one, and I need to read all the language, is that?
Well, we have a pack in front of us.
Okay. Okay, so I'll read them. Amend the third whereas to read, whereas a system for merit-based or step-based, or step-based pay increases for nonrepresented employees is necessary to ensure pay equity and compliance with legal requirements. So this simply adds step-based pay increases as a system that we would consider as an alternative to merit-based. Amendment number two, add a directive to read, be it further resolved that the Bureau of Human Resources will return to council with, within 180 days to report on key advantages and disadvantages of a merit-based system and a step-based system in order to give council the opportunity to decide between the two. And I believe Commissioner Fish has a suggested amendment to number two.
Why don't you put all four on, and then I'll offer a friendly amendment to Udaley, too.
Okay. Amendment number three, amend newly amended second directive to read, be it further resolved that after a standard HR administrative rule comment period and prior to expiration of the temporary administrative rule, the Bureau of Human Resources will return to council with a recommendation for final approval of a system for merit-based or step-based pay increases for nonrepresented employees. And finally, amendment number four, amend the third directive to read, be it further resolved, the chief human resources officer shall be responsible for review and update of this policy, as well as the development and implementation of any guidelines and procedures consistent with the merit system or step-based system to meet the needs and requirements of the city.
So Commissioner Udaley, on, on your amendment number two, by the way, okay, this is the way to do it. My concern is that when we start talking, and I support, I support the thrust of all these amendments. When we start talking about whether we go to a merit-based system or a step-based system, I think we get into areas of human resources and even labor relations that get fairly sensitive. We have represented, nonrepresented employees. There are questions councils want to want to have. Rather than require that with 180 days, this come back to council for a public hearing on pros and cons, I would, I would ask you to consider a friendly amendment that said, within 180 days, council offices will be briefed on this. And if you believe that a, some kind of collective action is warranted, I would suggest we do it in executive session, the way we do other HR issues of this magnitude, because I think we have to collectively have this conversation first with legal guidance and HR guidance. And we don't typically do that in this forum as a first cut. So my friendly amendment would be, and this would not preclude you to put this on the agenda and bring it back to council, but within 180 days, each office be briefed on HR's view of strengths and weaknesses and/or a, an executive session be scheduled for the purpose of briefing council.
I'm fine with that.
Very good. Can we move these as a package? Commissioner Fritz first.
I just have a question for the human resource, chief human resources officer. Do you have the capacity to be able to do this?
In 180 days, I do.
Thank you.
Could, unless there's any objection, could we move this as a package?
Second.
Very good. That's on the table. And then I have an amendment as well.
I should have an amendment, shouldn't I?
All the cool kids do.
We coordinated with Commissioner Hardisty's office on these four amendments. We could call them Udaley and Hardisty amendments if we'd like.
So my amendment, language to item 40, is down at the be it further resolved, the city, it says be it further resolved, the city budget office is directed to increase general fund bureau current appropriation levels for fiscal year 2019-20 to reflect increased costs associated with the pay equity study completed in December of 2018.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Just to clarify, this, this reflects the desire of the council during the work session to account for the increased salary requirement and its impact on the budget, to account for it now rather than waiting until later in the budget process. Very good. That is also on the table. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Tracy Reeve, Portland City Attorney, and we are here, I'm with Director Summers McGee, Chief Human Resources Officer. We're back before you pursuant to your direction at last Tuesday's work session that we bring forward a resolution that would permit the city to begin providing employees who are up for, nonrepresented employees who are up for reviews, merit increases on their normal anniversary dates. And with the amendments, this would also permit the Bureau of Human Resources to evaluate, while that temporary merit system or pilot merit system was in place, whether a step system might better meet the city's policy objectives. From a legal perspective, either a merit system substantially in the format attached to the resolution or a step system could meet the legal requirements and could be used as bona fide factor for compensation. So we're comfortable with the amendments meeting the legal requirements of the Pay Equity Act as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Summers McGee to talk about the pilot program.
Correct. Mayor Commissioners, thank you so much for allowing us to come before you in a rapid period of time. I think we had the session with you last week, and this week it's on the agenda. We had to pull a few strings to make that happen, and we're very grateful that you allowed it to take place. This new temporary merit system, merit system, as City Attorney Reeves expressed, will allow us to use merit as a bona fide factor in differentiating pay. In the interim, we will conduct the research that Commissioner Udaley put before us as an amendment to determine, to provide to you all in separate sessions and perhaps in an executive labor relations oriented environment, the pros and the cons associated with each of the options and the financial implications also associated with those. So we are fully in support of the amendments and are prepared to allow the city to process their merit increases and be in compliance with the law. Any questions for Tracy or I?
I just want to thank you again for your work on this. The state put us in this position of having to move really quickly, and you are a much better expert on these issues than I am. I just want to make sure that I've done my due diligence and that my bureaus can handle the impact moving forward regardless of what system we go with.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a public testimony on either the resolution or the ordinance?
Or the amendments.
Or the amendments, correct.
Yes, we have two people signed up, Maggie and Veronica Bernier.
Good morning, Veronica. Why don't you start?
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler. It's so good to see you. You're always looking well.
Thank you.
My goodness gracious, you've got a nice tan, too. A little color in your cheeks, which is good. It's hard to do that in the bleak midwinter. But it's not that bleak out here. Winter is what you make it. But I wanted to testify as a nurse, a former MICU nurse, belonging to Local 250 for over 30 years, that I really sincerely do believe in merit pay increases depending on your ability and the amount of effort you put into your job. We always want to remember the employees, city, state, and even on up to the president, who go the extra mile, if they can afford it, to, to make the way easy, especially for the older, older Americans and the little childrens. And also in marketplace in America where I think women always go the extra mile, people like Amanda Fritz, she will notice the situation and jump right into it. And as a former nurse, we always support our, our local nurse friends. But all you people are of good character. Chloe, I love your name. If I could just remember how to pronounce your last name, but it is Udaley, right?
U Daley.
U Daley. I'll get it straight.
No problem.
And Joanne Hardisty, we, we got to know you, and we know more, a little bit more about your thinking, although I'm, I'm a newcomer to it. I haven't been around these circles that long within the realm of the, of the labor industries. I did belong to Local 250 for over 30 years. And of course, Commissioner Fish is always supportive. I remember him in Sacramento, the Board of Engineers and all that. And did you know that Nick is a good singer? The Sing It Yourself Messiah, he brought in 250 singers. So anybody who can do that has my vote. So let's.
Learn something every day here.
That's right.
Learn something every day.
You have been holding out on me, Commissioner.
I'm gonna see karaoke.
Thank you, Veronica.
I noticed last time, I noticed last time she was here that you didn't comment on the fact that she was concerned that there were some empty houses that could have been fixed up, that low income or homeless people could have been put in, but you made a comment about flowers being able to cheer people up. So, you know, she brought up a serious issue and you totally blew it off. So anyway, thanks for that, Ted. So what I want to talk about is this merit pay and this idea of women going the extra mile. Okay, so there was this man who has Parkinson's and is in a walker, and he is in Director's Park where the public bathroom is blocked, and he urinates, he ends up in the, on himself, he ends ends up in the library. The librarians there, they call the quote unquote "social worker," a white male, who is not educated or trained in social work, nor is he a licensed social worker. And he hands the phone and the street roots book to this man who's shaking, he's got paranoia, he has a walker, he's homeless, he won't go into the shelters because he gets bullied and his stuff gets taken. He was exited from the Collins apartment with a bunch of other people, October 18th, 2016. And he's complaining about his pay to me. And first responders won't come and take this guy, 211, forget it. So I end up taking him down to TPI where I have to threaten them that I'm going to call the mayor before they will give this guy, who is wet all over himself, a shower. I have to take him over to Aging and Disability where they reinstate his food stamps because he doesn't realize he has to come in every year to get them reinstated. He's tried to apply for retirement, he doesn't understand that he's disabled and he needs to apply for disability. So he has zero income, he's out on the street, he's got Parkinson's, he's got diminished capacity, he's incontinent, and he's out in the freezing cold with no sleeping bag. And, you know, so I tried to help him get to Northwest Pilot, and he didn't show up, but at least he's got his food stamps now. Before that, he was eating from the food carts and out of the garbage. Thanks, Ted. So Ted, when you say you disagree with me about disabled people being put out on the street?
I don't disagree with that.
Yes, yes you did.
Please do not put words in my mouth, Maggie.
You're wrong.
Please, seriously.
You're wrong. And you know I reported this to your office because your staff timestamped it.
Thank you, Maggie. Your time is expired.
And so I would like to know about the merit pay of this guy who did nothing.
Your time is expired. We'll take a recess.
Mayor, should we take the amendments in order?
We're going to take the amendments in order. We're going to start with Commissioner Fritz's amendments first, unless there's any other questions. Carla, please call the roll.
Fritz. Thank you to the Director of the Bureau of Human Resources, the City Attorney, the City Budget Office, who have all worked really hard to get this matter taken care of. I appreciate your accepting my amendments to allow comments from the bureaus. We want to make sure that this works for the bureaus and that we take input from all the bureaus into what the merit system should look like. And I particularly want the Office of Equity and Human Rights to weigh in on that. Clearly, even a points based merit system can become biased and then lead to inequities. And yet, I believe that we need to have incentives and rewards for people who do meritorious work, and I believe we can budget for that, and that we should continue to encourage our employees to stay with us and to do the very best work for the public that they can. Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Hardisty.
Aye.
Udaley.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The Fritz amendment is adopted. We'll take the Udaley amendment next, please.
This is the Udaley package as amended.
Fritz.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Hardisty.
Aye.
Udaley.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The Udaley package is adopted. Last, the Wheeler amendment. Please call the roll.
Fritz.
Aye.
Fish.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this makes a lot of sense. Aye.
Hardisty.
Aye.
Udaley.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The amendment is adopted. Now we'll vote on the resolution as amended. Please call the roll. Item 40.
Fritz.
Because of the state mandate, for better or worse, bureaus are losing most of their historic discretion in personnel matters from setting starting salaries based on market demands and real life, real world realities for new hires, to setting their own merit increase system. I worry that we need to be able to continue to hire and reward superstars. I am concerned that this will set back our efforts to diversify our workforce and meet our equity goals. However, this is what is required by Oregon's new pay equity law, and I support this resolution. I think we have to be very careful that we don't get to the realm of Animal Farm where all animals are equal and that there is no incentive for continued garnering and encouragement of the best employees. Aye.
Fish.
Thanks to the Bureau of Human Resources and the City Attorney's Office, among others, for the work in bringing all this work product forward. This is very complicated stuff, and I'm still recovering from some of the testimony in the hearing last week about the fact that notwithstanding the issuance of regulations in November of last year, we still may be on the hook for a two-year window looking back, even though there was no clear guidance, which is extraordinary. I hope we don't end up being punished for doing the right thing, because that, you know, we are probably one of the few cities that is actually implementing this in a timely manner. And I appreciate the work of all the professionals who brought this forward. I think the amendments are sound, and I'm pleased to support them. And on the resolution, I vote aye.
Hardisty.
I think that the amendments make this resolution stronger, and so I appreciate Commissioner Udaley, Commissioner Fritz, and Mayor Wheeler in enhancing this resolution. I appreciate the work that the Human Resources Department has been involved in. It must be crazy making. But I look forward to us having our next conversation about really what is the most equitable way to make sure that we are rewarding excellence in our employees and we're not disincentivizing people to want to have a career at the city of Portland. I vote aye.
U Daley.
Well, for the third time, I will thank Director Summers-McGee and HR for their swift and diligent work on this matter. It is a complex topic. I have no doubt we can arrive at a solution that works for everyone, and I appreciate your receiving my amendments in the spirit in which they're intended. Aye.
Wheeler.
Well, I'll just lean on my introductory comments, and I want to respond just briefly to some comments that Meg made. Meg, while I don't always believe the way you approach these issues are particularly civil or respectful, I want to appreciate the content of what you said. I want to add one more organization to the list that you could refer people to. I had the opportunity last night to go out with a crew from JOIN. I had the opportunity to help hand out sleeping bags, hats, and gloves to people who are living on the street. There's no question in my mind that people living on the street deserve a compassionate approach to help them get off the street and whatever resources or services they need to stay off the street. So I just want to say, I don't think you know me particularly well, but I appreciate the larger message that you were trying to get across. I vote aye. The resolution is adopted as amended. Next up is the ordinance, item number 41. Please call the roll.
Fritz.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Hardisty.
Aye.
U Daley.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you, everyone. Next up, item 42.
Authorize the First Amendment to the 2013 amended and restated Visitors' Facilities Intergovernmental Agreement with Multnomah County and Metro.
Good morning, Susan. It's good to see you.
Good morning. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. What you have in front of you is a pretty simple, limited amendment to the existing 2013 Visitor Facilities Intergovernmental Agreement. The amendment will authorize a one-time $2 million payment to the Portland Five Centers for the Arts. That amendment is allowing them to secure $3 million in private contributions to replace the obsolete acoustical shell system at Arlene Schnitzer Concert Hall. The replacement of the shell will not only benefit the symphony, but it'll benefit every single user in the venue. It will also potentially allow more use of the venue because the time needed to switch out the existing physical shell will not be needed since the new shell will be an electronic system. You may recall that in December, I was in front of you with a more comprehensive restatement of the existing IGA. Those negotiations have not come to completion, and the Mayor, Commissioner Cifori, and then President, Metro President Hughes, agreed that we would move forward with this limited amendment so that we did not lose the opportunity to secure the $3 million private contribution. You may have noticed in the ordinance that it does say that the letter of agreement signed by the Mayor, the Chair, and President Hughes committed to completing this by May 17th. So you might be wondering why I'm here quite so early. I would point out, one, there's no emergency clause on this, so it'll be 37 days before the Mayor is actually authorized to sign it. Multnomah County may need to amend their code in order to make this happen, so we're trying to make sure that there's sufficient time for that to happen. Thus, the reason I'm here so early in the year. And if there's any questions, happy to answer them.
Commissioner Fish.
So Susan, when I had the honor of being the Arts Commissioner, a couple of years ago, the Oregon Symphony approached us and said they had secured the donor, the $3 million of funding, and was looking for a contribution from the city. So I think, while it's not reflected in the documents before us, and because P5 is actually the landlord, I think we should acknowledge that it's the Oregon Symphony that is the current occupant that, among others, recognized that the sound system is inadequate and it has outlived its usefulness. Everyone will benefit that participates in programs at the Schnitz, but I believe it was the Symphony that secured the private donor, who may be anonymous.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct.
And so I think we should do a shout out to Mr., is it Showwater?
Yes, Scott Showwater.
Scott Showwater. And the Oregon Symphony, this is a good leverage, and this is one of those rare instances where we get to put a little bit of public money and we get a little more private money together to maintain a facility that our funds were designed to help maintain anyway. And maintaining a reasonable acoustic system is basic infrastructure at the Schnitz. So thank you for your good work on this.
I would also point out that the council did approve a $500,000 contribution from the Spectator Venue Budget for this fiscal year. That is also a one-time contribution from city funds to that project. So we are making a direct contribution as well as the $2 million coming out of the transient lodging tax through the IGA.
Commissioner Fritz.
Thank you for all your good work on this and many other things. I appreciate it. Does, so the city for our assets has a prioritized list of what's the most critical, likely to fail, cost of failure, consequence of failure. Do the visitor facilities, infrastructure, buildings have a similar list?
I know Metro has launched an asset management program, and they are working right now to improve their asset management knowledge about all of Metro's venues, both ones that they own as well as ones that they operate on behalf of the city, which would be the Portland Five venues. I would say they're somewhat ahead of the city overall in their asset management understanding and data that they have. We have a pretty, they have a pretty good handle on the OCC, the Expo Center. Portland Five is really more of a collaboration between the city and Metro, and we've been working on that for probably the last 18 months. You may remember, we've done a facility condition assessment and an ADA evaluation at those buildings, so we're working to put together more information about that.
So is this shell the number one priority for all of the things that we need to fund?
It's very high. It is actually physically dangerous. Portland Five had to put some money into it this last fiscal year just to keep it safe. The, you know, so it is a structure that sits on stage over the symphony and is, you know, it needs to be replaced at this point. It is well past its usable lifespan. There are certainly at other spectator venues that the city owns, perhaps more pressing needs. You're certainly aware of the Veterans Memorial Coliseum's needs, but given that the shell is an essential part of any symphony performance and physically is a danger at this point, it rose to the top of the list. And as Commissioner Fish pointed out, there was a limited time for achieving that private contribution.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hardisty.
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned that this visitor facilities fund, we're still in the process of negotiating for houseless services as part of updating the IGA. And I thought that there were at least three or four facilities that were going to have some repairs done in addition to additional resources for houseless services. I guess I'm really concerned that if we start taking them out one at a time, we will never get to the housing service component of this IGA update. And so where are we on that? You said it hasn't worked yet, but where are we on that?
So we are not currently at the table. The Mayor's office and his staff are in conversation with the Chair's office to figure out when and how to restart those discussions. I don't disagree with you at all that taking this piecemeal is probably not the best way to approach it, and many of the needs that we were attempting to address in the larger conversation are far greater than what we're talking about here. In the previous discussions, it was a $40 million contribution to the VMC, $40 million for additional P5 needs, there was money in there for Expo, as well as the homelessness services. We need to get back to the table to talk about those. Again, the $2 million is what allows us to gain that $3 million. So I think the Mayor, the Chair, and President Hughes really felt the timing on that was urgent enough that we should move it forward while we continue to figure out how the larger conversation goes forward.
So I have some more recent information that I haven't had a chance to share with Susan. So Chair Cifori and I met yesterday, and while there's no guarantees, I think we are all committed to getting to yes on an agreement that puts forward those resources for services related to our permanent supportive housing and chronic homeless service continuum. What we agreed to yesterday was to get the staff back in the room to agree on a baseline of where the agreement is. In other words, we're going to unpeel, there were several drafts of potential agreements, and we're going to start unpeeling those drafts till we get to the baseline of where we agree that we are in the conversation, and then start having conversations sequentially in the same room, hearing the same information about what amendments, if any, we need to make to that agreement. So both the Chair and I are approaching this with a sense of commitment and a sense of urgency, and the new President of Metro, Lynn Peterson, is interested in having her staff engaged in this as well, although I've not had a conversation with her subsequent to my conversation with the Chair yesterday. So it is back into the discussion phase. I'm not going to make any promises or guarantees, except to say I think it is very, very important that we get to yes on this and that we resolve any disagreements that the county may have with the current proposal as it exists. A lot of their concerns relate to limiting liability and risk, and I believe we can overcome all of those obstacles. That's my personal perspective.
Mayor.
Commissioner Udaley.
Since we've gone a little off track, but the issue has been raised, I would like to make some comments as well. First, I think it's helpful to the public to understand that the money that we're talking about is the transient lodging tax. It's 11.5 tax collected on hotel rooms, and 6% of it goes to the city, which is shared between the General Fund and Travel Portland. The remaining 5.5 goes to Multnomah County, and let's see, that doesn't add up, does it? Well, we got this right off the website, so it's divided roughly equally between the city and the county, and it has traditionally been spent on things that we directly relate to the tourism industry, such as improvements to our spectator venues, which the city actually owns and is obligated to maintain and make improvements to in our benefit to the city. I share Commissioner Hardisty's concern that we I share Commissioner Hardesty's concern that we were able to move forward on something that feels less urgent, although if it is a serious safety risk to members of our Symphony, I'd consider that an urgent matter. But I wanna state on the record that homelessness is absolutely related to tourism, and that this is a legitimate use of these dollars. Tourism is a driver of gentrification, displacement, and unaffordability. There is a 94% correlation, or I should say, there is a overwhelming correlation between unaffordability and homelessness, and tourism has a major role to play in that. We hear from the tourism industry and businesses who depend on tourist dollars, the impact that our homeless crisis is having on them, and while, as a business owner, I can certainly understand their concerns and sympathize to a certain degree, we need them to recognize that they are part of the problem, and that we need to devote dollars to mitigating the impact of tourism on our housing and homeless crisis.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Commissioner Fish.
Since my office has also been deeply involved in these negotiations, I wanna say that there is no disagreement between the county and the city as to the propriety of using essentially the sales tax that we collect on tourism. That's what this is. We don't have a sales tax, but we have a mechanism for collecting taxes on tourism, on the 16 million people that come through our community because we are a hot destination. And the question is, should we use a small portion of that to fund the service side of permanent supportive housing, as the mayor said? There is no disagreement between the county and the city as to the utility of using those funds. In my own opinion, we had this deal done if we asked some of the lawyers and accountants and other people to step outside after they'd made their presentations, because I think there are too many cooks in the kitchen, and at some point, you can do risk assessments upon risk assessments, and after a while, you get paralyzed. So my only plea to my colleagues is, we have a generous private donor willing to help us meet the condition of one of our flagship, we should not hold this hostage to the fact that we had hoped we'd have a deal months ago. Let's find the areas of agreement, let's support the mayor in his negotiations. I have huge confidence, given how strongly Commissioner, excuse me, Multnomah County Chair Kefory supports the, both the supportive housing agenda and how diligently she's been looking for funding sources, that we'll get to a deal. But let's not hold up this opportunity to leverage private money.
I certainly did not mean to suggest that the city and county aren't in agreement on how these dollars are spent, although I think there is question in the larger community, and so I wanted to lay out my justification, and I also absolutely don't wanna hold this item hostage. It needs to happen, and there's a benefit to the public, so.
Yeah, it's a fair question, because, you know, I get asked it, too. People are like, with all the things going on in the community, why are you investing in the shell, in a performance center? And so I just wanna remind the public at this juncture that the fund we are talking about is essentially a trust fund established for the purpose of investing in travel and tourism assets and operations. It cannot be used for other general fund purposes. And there is a committee that prioritized this project based on the criteria that Susan mentioned, both the safety risk, the importance of the shell to the performance center, as well as the fact that there's a private sector donor that provides significant leverage to this as well. So it's not as broad as people would like to think in terms of how we can use those resources. Very good. Any, does that conclude your testimony?
Yeah.
Any further questions? Is there any public testimony on this item? Carla?
Yes, we have two people signed up, Maggie and Shadrick J. Wilkins.
Mayor, we may actually lose a quorum in a little while. We still have four matters, at least five matters left. Could we enforce the rules so?
Yeah, let's reduce testimony to two minutes, please. And again, testimony must be germane to the subject at hand.
Okay. It doesn't matter how many dollars you allot to housing homeless social services if the people that you put in place are not connected to the agencies that can help them. The quote-unquote "social worker" who has no education or training in social work and cannot connect this man at the library to any social agencies and will not because he's complaining about his pay, that it's above his pay grade. And then you have, where I'm a Salvation Army, I went to my quote-unquote "housing advocate", she knows nothing about...
Maggie, Maggie, are you trying to do this? Are you intentionally doing this?
I'm talking about this...
You heard Commissioner Fish's frustration. He has left the room.
I'm talking about...
I need you to focus on this issue.
Right, you're talking about dollars for housing and homeless services.
You're talking about an ordinance that would allocate $2 million of the visitors' development fund for the purpose of investing in a shell at one of our performance centers. That is what we are discussing.
Okay, but if you don't have the workers that can connect people to these services that have the training and ability, you're giving money to Salvation Army. Their housing advocate knows, has no connection to any housing agencies whatsoever. So I'm just saying there's...
Maggie, when you come in here and you do this, you are taking time from other people. We've already had to shorten the amount of testimony.
There's nobody here.
There are four more items, and there are people sitting behind you who have been listening to you.
There are three chairs, there's an empty chair.
They're not interested in this particular issue.
You know, and you're only cutting down by one third.
No, I just need you to focus on the issue at hand. This is the third time you've testified today.
The social worker at the library is a county matter. We don't have anything to do with that, by the way.
Thank you.
I agree, the audio system of a building should be funded because a large building like the...
Shadrick, your mic is off. Shadrick, your mic is off.
Now, just poke the button.
This makes my point.
There, help him poke the button there on the center console. Thank you.
Which what?
Yeah, this makes my point, that in a large building like the Orleans Stentor Concert Hall, people in the outer part of the camp, can't hear the full performance of the sound or the Memorial Coliseum. To put it short, I'd say fund this.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? There being none. This is a first reading of an non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Next item, 43.
Authorize a collection agreement with the U.S. Forest Service in the amount of $283,985 to fund the design and construction of a fish habitat restoration project on the Zig Zag River for the Bull Run Water Supply Habitat Conservation Plan.
Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Commissioner Fritz.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry, thank you, Commissioner.
It's all right. This council action is a partnership between the city's water bureau and the U.S. Forest Service to improve habitats for salmon and steelhead fish in the Zig Zag River. It's a part of the Bull Run Habitat Conservation Plan, which seeks to mitigate the impact that the Bull Run water drinking system has on wildlife habitat, and was approved by council in 2008. The U.S. Forest Service has a team of staff with expertise on restoring wildlife habitats. The city will provide funding, and the U.S. Forest Service will design and construct the restoration project. And now I'll turn it over to Director Mike Stewart, who will introduce his team and tell you a bit more.
Good morning, Commissioners. In particular, Commissioner Hardesty, welcome.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Stewart. I'm the director of the Portland Water Bureau. I wish I had kept track of all the times I had come here.
[laughing]
Many times. What we're here to talk about today, I'm joined on my left by Steve Kuchas, a fisheries biologist and the manager of our environmental program, and on my right, Burke Strobel, who's an environmental compliance specialist, both from our Resource Protection Division, whose main mission in life is protecting our watershed. We're here to talk today about a project in the Bull Run Water Supply Habitat Conservation Plan. This is a plan that was approved in 2009. It, in the total 50-year span of the project, spends about $93 million to improve habitat in the Bull Run and the Sandy River watershed. We are in our 10th year of this program. The larger projects in the program were sort of front-loaded. They should be done in 15 years, and as I said, we're in the 10th year of that. This ordinance describes the approach for completing another large HCP project, and I'm gonna let Steve Kuchas and Burke explain what that project is. Thanks.
Good morning. Steve Kuchas, the environmental compliance manager of the Water Bureau. So the ordinance you have in front of you is just literally authorizing us to enter into a contract or a collection agreement with the Forest Service to design, permit, and build a fish restoration project on the Zig Zag River, which is in the upper Sandy River Basin. There's considerable time savings and money savings for working with the Forest Service on this project. This project is located on federal property, and with this collection agreement, we don't have to create a separate landowner agreement, because it's obviously the federal government. That usually saves us over a year in staff planning and time just to create that kind of a document. The Forest Service is very well-equipped to do this type of project for us. They've been doing these types of restoration projects for over 10 years. They can take our specifications and our conditions and actually implement them themselves. And even with the government shutdown, they have already selected the contractor for the job that would do this project in the summer, and so they're well-poised to make this thing implemented. And so, for brevity for today, I was just gonna show you a few pictures of what a project like this looks like. So, we have some slides, and the first one shows you, most of you know that in 1964, we had a one-in-a-hundred-year flood event in the Pacific Northwest, and we lost homes in the Sandy River Basin. And our reaction was probably large, and we had the Corps of Engineers come in and actually channelize most of our streams. So they went through with bulldozers and just put gravel side to side with the idea that we would make water runoff in a straight line and go out more quickly. And there is some sense to that, but that was incredibly detrimental to habitat and what the fish need, and it's partly why some of our fish are listed under the Endangered Species Act. So on the next slide, this is actually where the proposed project area is, on the Zig Zag River. And if you look kind of in the background under the trees, you actually see a berm, and that's where the bulldozers just piled up the gravels, and there's large boulders built into that. And that berm's been there for over 50 years. And so what it does is the stream kind of stays in a narrow channel and can't get out into the floodplain, and that's where really the fish benefits are. So as we go into the next slide, this doesn't look fancy to you, but this is where the, that's where the fish want to go. When the flood flows come up, we want the flow to spread out sideways, and that's where all the kind of the little fish hideouts are and where the velocity's lower, and this is what ensures successful completion of their life history. This is sorely lacking in these channelized streams. And then finally, and you're looking at the top of a berm, and one of the things we do is we actually build what is called engineered log jams. These jams are designed to withstand 100-year flood flows, so they're pretty tricky in their construction, and they make the water go sideways. We will actually breach those old berms in several spots, and then when the water comes up, the wood itself will deflect flow out into those floodplains. And so that's the purpose of this type of a project that we're planning to do on the Zig Zag River. And I believe that it was the last slide, and that was the habitat looks like, and we were gonna stop there and see if you had any questions.
Colleagues, any questions?
We'll stand by.
Perfect, thank you. We'll take public testimony. Has anybody signed up, Carla?
We have three people signed up, Edith Gillis, Maggie, and Jay Veronica Bernier.
Very good.
It always seems that it takes agriculture, or fisheries, or industrial to see some sort of self-interest for them in order to get these projects to happen. I'm just wondering, have they considered what the impact of global warming is gonna have on the projects that they're doing, and are they planning for, you know, the increased temperature and what's, what that's gonna do? If that's gonna make the water go down, or if the water's gonna go up? So I would look at global warming. Also, I would like to say that other industries need to get involved in cleaning up the messes that we, as humans, have created and, you know, improve the environment and put it back to where it was before. You know, 'cause we've gouged into the earth and we've made these messes and polluted the waters and changed the channels. You know, I used to hang out up at the Josie Wallops up in Washington on the Olympic Peninsula, and then they had a huge flood, and they had a fish farm up there, and then the farm animals and the wild salmon, they all got integrated because of the huge flood, and so now the genetic, you know, separation of the farm fish and the wild fish is no longer there. They're now, they're now integrated, so the farm fish and the wild fish are, you know, hanging out together, and they're creating a new genetic species. So how does that play into it?
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, before you move to the second reading, I'd just like to thank the staff, both from the Water Bureau and our partners, for their patience in sitting through this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Any further questions? There being none. This is a first reading of an non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Next up, 44.
Create a local improvement district to construct street, sidewalk, and stormwater improvements, and construct a mast-arm traffic signal at the Northeast 42nd Avenue and Columbia Boulevard intersection in the Northeast 46th Avenue and Saratoga Court Local Improvement District.
Colleagues, this is a second reading. There has already been a presentation and testimony on this item. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Fritz?
I.
Fish?
I.
Saltzman, I'm sorry, Hardesty?
[laughing]
Wait a second. It was only a matter of time. It was only a matter of time.
Of course, it would have been Carla.
Of all people.
At least once.
Can't get called Hales, I could call Fritz, now you'll be called Saltzman. It's only a matter of time.
I.
You, Daley.
Well, I'd just like to thank Andrew Abbey once again. Who knew local improvement districts could be so much fun? And I've been promised a party by Trima when this is completed, so I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you all. Next item is item 45.
Accept report to maintain Title 18 noise code exemption for pile driving.
Commissioner, you, Daley.
This item's been referred back to my office.
Very good. Item 46.
46. Authorize changes to city code to implement campaign finance in candidate elections charter amendment and request initiation of validation action.
Very good, and we are honored by the presence of the city auditor. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I am...
Good afternoon.
I'm sorry, you're right. Good afternoon. I am City Auditor Mary Hall Caballero, and I am here to introduce an ordinance that codifies the recent voter-approved charter amendment that limits certain campaign contributions and expenditures in city elections. While voters overwhelmingly supported this measure, there are constitutional questions that need to be answered before the charter requirements are implemented. Several provisions of similar code adopted by Multnomah County Commissioners in response to a charter amendment were struck down last year by a circuit court as impermissible under the Oregon Constitution. That decision currently is on appeal. Therefore, in addition to adopting code that is in keeping with the will of the voters, this ordinance also authorizes the city attorney to seek a legal review to ensure the legislation is constitutional before the city moves forward with implementation.
Very good. Any further questions? Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanna make sure that we put on the record that this is not an attempt to undo what 87% of the voters have done. This actually just positions us to be able to have our own case in the federal, in the courts, right, to make sure that we can legally implement this measure.
That's correct. We wanna respect...
Now, part of the initiative talked about enforcing disclosure requirements. Is that something that the court has to act on or is that something that we, the city, just does because that's what the voters said?
It's my understanding that we need to have the courts review the code that is before you today. And if they validate some sections but not others, we would go forward with those. And if they invalidate the whole thing, then we would not go forward if they find it unconstitutional.
And final question, what's the timeline normally on these kind of court cases? You know, we're still waiting for the county, right?
I have the timeline that the county spent. And I don't know if, because this case has gone forward ahead of ours, if ours would go faster. I just don't know the answer to that question. But the county charter was passed in November of 2016. And the county filed a validation action, which is being contemplated by you all today in May of 2017. And the judge issued his order on March 16, 2018.
Thank you.
Very good. Public testimony.
Yes, I believe we have about six more people on the list. The first three, please come on up, are Julia DeGrau, Jason Cefory, and Moses Ross.
Come on up. Two minutes. Name for the record, please. And the microphones move around. About six inches is ideal.
So I have a quick request. Jason had a change in his schedule and he's going to be coming. He should be here any minute, but could we have Thomas come up third and then have Jason come after Thomas? Okay, perfect. So yes, my name is Julia DeGrau. I am working with Portland Forward and I'm also spending some of my time on honest elections, which we had the privilege of helping pass this ballot measure with almost 90% of the support of Portland voters. I, I kind of did prepare for three minutes, so hopefully I can power this down. We are happy to see that the city is moving forward with this quickly to implement this, you know, as quickly as possible. We have some presentations from other folks who have been working on this for a long time about the updates on where we're at, the legal process and the constitutionality, which is why Jason's particularly important on this. I just personally wanted to recommend that you recommend your city attorneys, you know, fight for this as constitutional in honor of Portland voters and take into account, and that's kind of how the county moved forward with this. And we also did a really great job of addressing some of the concerns that the judge brought up in the ordinance that we passed here in Portland, which is something to keep in mind. But again, it will be brought up by my fellow testifiers. I also just wanted to add in here that as someone who ran for Portland City Council, I would have really loved to have been able to both have access to the public funding, which is happening. And I think that dovetails really well with the campaign finance reform. It'll be much easier for your public funding to work properly when you have people who aren't going to be raising, you know, thousands of dollars from wealthy individuals and corporations. So.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good morning. Moses Ross from the Multnomah Neighborhood in Portland. First off, I want to thank you all very much for your consideration of the campaign finance reform and the ordinances that accompany it. Very brief history. I was a member of the Multnomah County Charter Review Committee. And I introduced and championed campaign finance reform measure to be voted upon by the voters. The consensus was 89% in approval at the county level. We then, our coalition brought this to the city of Portland voters. And they also decisively agreed, 87% approval of campaign, of the need for campaign finance reform here at both the city and the county. So a broad swath of the community has backed both measures. So what has impressed me about the situation, as my political passion being in acting campaign finance reform, is how many people here in this city want to level this playing field in local politics? We had extensive political coalitions that were meant to get this CFR, Campaign Finance Reform Legislation, on the ballot so that the voters could decide. And I'm pleased to say that we actually found common cause with not only the Oregonian, the Scanner, the Willamette Week, and the Portland Mercury, which I think is, we should get a star for in the fact that all four of them agreed upon this. We also, the four main parties, four out of the five main parties, political parties, also agreed for the need for this. And then, of course, two of the current council members were also in support of this measure. So I, I mentioned this to show the comprehensive and broad support for this within the community. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Moses. Good afternoon.
Thomas Etienne, hopefully I'm there. Thomas Etienne, Multnomah County, and a volunteer on this issue. It's extremely important. I'll just start with mentioning that on Tuesday, January 29, 6:00 p.m., Lucky Lab on Hawthorne, there will be a gathering with some of our commissioners here about campaign finance and state of money and politics in Oregon. And anyone's invited to public event. And other than that, you know, I just live some of the consequences of this as a veteran. We have a long legacy of that. We have issues with why is money and politics able, the Pentagon can say, we need to close these bases. They have no defense purpose for national security. Amazingly, the bases won't close. We can't get the right equipment when we needed it downrange because it wasn't the most profitable things for industry to produce at that time. No bid contracts, issues like that. The consequences of money and politics is directly tied to the public's trust. If you look at the Georgetown University and did a institutional poll for 2018 of trust in institutions. And local government is faring better than state and federal level, which is at the bottom. But it's not faring very well. And at the very top is military and Amazon.com. So you can see where people are finding value in society versus the institutions that are supposed to be taking care of, kind of the invisible layer.
By the way, I did take some pleasure in seeing that local government ranks in the 50 percents.
It's in the middle.
In the middle, 50 to 60%. Congress was down at 8%. I thought that showed that at least the closer you are to the people, the more likely people are to have some skin in the game and a different feeling about the institution. The further away you are, the, the public attitudes decline. By the way, the same poll said that, that faith in institutions generally, public and private, was plummeting. So it was a, it was system-wide in institutions generally, churches, government, you name it. But I did think local government did, did, did better than most, as I recall.
It is. And that's why I think we're sitting here and why you can get this, you know, 87 and 88% supporting this issue at the county and city levels. It's remarkable that people can identify what's going on because they're not silly. They're not foolish. They understand what's happening, why money and politics is making it particularly difficult for the world to work for their basic benefits. And the real deadly consequences, if you look at Europe, there's a lot of money in politics going in there that's feeding far kind of populist right that's happening right now. Britain's dealing with a huge problem. And it can lead to political violence. And I would even suggest that some of the reason that even this body has a hard time with people coming in here, they can't find a way to actually address grievances that works anymore. And then it ends up going into silliness, foolishness, and disrespectfulness because they don't believe it works anymore. And it should have been dealt with further back along the line. But I'll just close with, what was it, Justice Louis Brandeis, who said, you know, we may have democracy or we may have wealth concentrated in the hands of a few, but we can't have both. People made their choice and this is what they, they see as a way forward.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next three are Jason Cefory, Maggie, and Ron Buell. Okay, so we'll go with Nancy Newell.
Afternoon. I ran over here because I was late. First, obviously, we're urging you guys. What's that?
Name for the record.
Jason Cefory. We're urging you as our city council to stand with 87.5% of the citizens and the Portland voters who took this measure and looked at it and analyzed it and said, yes, this is what we need to get big money out of our local politics. The landscape has dramatically shifted on big money in politics. We just saw Phil Knight contribute $4.5 million in this last gubernatorial race. The U.S. Supreme Court, I think, is going to be attacking unions in the, in the future and their power to participate. We are seeing the super rich take over courts across the country and buy legislators. And we have a lot of momentum here in Oregon at several levels. At the county level, the 26-184, which passed in 2016, is now on a fast track to go right to the Supreme Court. You guys may not know that, but the Court of Appeals has now agreed that it can go directly to the Supreme Court. So we may get a decision on that within a year, a year and a half, which would be fabulous. Secondly, I expect that the 26-200 measure, which you guys are dealing with now, will likely get put into abatement or joined with that other 26-184 lawsuit. There are several differences between 26-184 and 200. And I don't have time to get into all of them, but in general, the Portland measure flushes out enforcement and the disclosures piece in a much more detailed level than the county measure did. So.
Is that, do you consider that to be, those to be constitutional issues or administrative issues?
Both. One of the reasons that 26-184 on the disclosures piece was thrown out by Judge Block, as he called it, quote, vague, because there was only one sentence about it. So what we did at the, at the city measure is we flushed it out over three or four pages of exactly how that would work. So it, it covers both. We've been approached now by Lane County to bring a similar measure by their head person at city council there. The governor working with her on a legislative referral directly to the voters for 2020. That's in the, in the draft phase. The Senate, the Legislative Senate has now set up a Campaign Finance Reform Committee that Senator Jeff Golden is chairing. And there are several House bills that deal with these issues. So bottom line, we'd like you, as our city council, to urge your city attorneys to back this effort pushed by the voters at the courts because it's a political issue just as much as it is a legal issue. Thank you, guys.
Jason, could I ask you a couple of questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
I always appreciate free legal advice, so I'll take advantage of the opportunity.
I'm here to answer.
So you, you had identified a couple of areas that had been identified in the county proposal as being somewhat weak. Do you feel then that the issues have been adequately addressed? And if so, why would this proposal be, I forget the exact word you used, but join with the county effort? Why, why wouldn't it just be approved on its face if it addresses those issues that the judge had concerns about in the county initiative?
So remember, there's four parts to these measures. So number one is limits on contributions. That has to get addressed at the Supreme Court or as a constitutional referral. That just has to.
So that, that's a must-have.
That, that, that one has to be dealt with because unlike 37 other states with the exact same free speech clause that all have limits on contributions, for some reason, our 1997 Oregon Supreme Court made a ruling saying that limits violate our, our free speech clause in our, in our state constitution. So we think that is beyond an outlier and that our Oregon Supreme Court will overturn that or that it'll get referred to the voters directly. So that's a piece one. Piece two, the disclosures piece, I think it's, that there's no court that's ever found it unconstitutional. And the main reason that Block did it, was Judge Block did it, was because there wasn't any fleshed out detail. So I expect that that is now going to pass constitutional muster. Yeah, the disclosures piece. We also put limits on independent expenditures. That's going to get thrown out, we believe, because Citizens United. I mean, you just, Citizens United says dark money can give as much money as they want. And of course, that's where the disclosures piece fits in. At least we can make the independent expenditure say who's giving the money and their advertising.
Okay, but that doesn't.
Eric Garland might have decided that case differently.
This all started back 2016, yes. We thought that Judge Garland would have been a much better decider. In fact, it was Hillary Clinton said it was her litmus test. One of her litmus tests for a judge was to overturn Citizens United. So.
Mr. Cefory, if that piece gets pulled out or it's questioned, does that invalidate the whole thing or just that piece?
We were smart lawyers, Mayor. What we did is we put a clause in there that says, if any of this is found unconstitutional, it does not impact the rest of the measure. So it's going to be a piecemeal selection. And then, you know, we have these small donor committees where unions or nonprofit groups or the OLCV, for example, can give, as long as they can identify $100 per member, they can give larger donations. I don't see any constitutional problems with that. I think that probably passes constitutional muster. And then, as I said, you know, the fourth piece is the disclosures taglines, which has been upheld. Eight or 10 different states, Washington and California, all have incredibly similar disclosure laws now. So I think, you know, the biggie though is going to be, can we put a cap on how much an individual can give to a politician? That's going to be the biggie. And that's going to be something that we learn in 2020 from the Supreme Court or from... But we would like all of you as politicians to support the effort that these should be constitutional with our city attorneys.
Thank you. Thank you for your clarification.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks for answering my questions. Good afternoon.
Okay, so dark money has led to our EPA being led by a coal CEO. It's led to the NRA being able to buy less regulation. So we have all these assault weapons that are unaccounted for and mass shootings and foreign money coming into our government as well as corporations. And the Russian nesting doll of political action committees and nonprofits that just can hide all their money. And, and corporations are people and dollars are voters. And that's, that's what we've got. That's why we've got the situation we have in Washington. And you should be able to run as who you are. I realize Oregon's a Democrat state. And so you, Ted, were once a registered Republican, but you have to run as a Democrat in order to, to, to be in the, the race, to, to win.
Maggie, that was over, I think, 20 years ago. I ran for mayor three years ago and that's well-known. That is on the record.
And it's also a nonpartisan position.
It has nothing to do with what we're here to discuss today. So can you keep saying, I feel like a broken record.
I'm just saying, you should be able to run as, as who, you know, what you believe in and, and not on the whim of, of, you know, where the most money is going to get you in. And, and then, you know, you look at disabled people, poor people, they don't have the money to buy their representation. So you have all these smaller little groups that have absolutely no money. And, and how does this encourage voters to vote and young people? You know, young people don't have money. How, how does that encourage them to vote if they've got all this foreign and corporate money and dark donors?
Thank you. Good afternoon.
My name is Nancy Newell. I'm a longtime activist in the city of Portland. I'm proud of my record. I have drawn attention to government officials when there are crooks and there are things happening within not only City Hall, but the county and at several levels, levels of governance in state of Oregon. I think it is essential. Chase Bank is now, because Mayor Wheeler feels that they're appropriate to have the loan on the repair of our water infrastructure. Our water leads to autism in children when families can't afford enough water to give their children. This is, these are critical issues. And I've been kicked out of the state treasurer's office, bringing it to the attention there. And every time I brought it to the attention, something happens that cuts me off from getting the information to the public. But I have been proven right every time. I'll give you a great example. Enron was brought in here and I pointed out what they had done in India and that was not regarded, was easily licensed. And the CEO of Enron ended up dead. And it is questionable and there is several facts that he was actually murdered. So we have Chase Bank having our commons, thanks to the mayor, as state treasurer. And you think, if anybody in this room thinks that big money in this town, Chase Bank's headquarters is right behind us, the biggest international crooks operate in this city and they get things done in their way. And I don't think any of my efforts have been in vain. I just think that to continue to be honest about what actually goes on behind the scenes, Warren Buffett owns Pacific Core. Why do we have him owning a utility where people's electricity is essential to so many services, including hospitals, where backup electricity may not even function well enough? And he's known for poor maintenance. He's already been cited several times. Do something about it. services, including hospitals, where backup electricity may not even function well enough? And he's known for poor maintenance. He's already been cited several times. Do something about it. This is a start.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And we're doing a forum on January 29th on this whole big money in politics, so we'll be sure to invite all of you guys to that.
Very good.
Unless Edith, Shadrick, or Veronica are in the room, that's all who signed up.
Very good. Unless there's any further questions, we'll call the roll.
The report, or is this, I'm sorry.
This is an ordinance.
Sorry, I had them all lined up. Fritz?
Thanks to the auditor for bringing this to us expeditiously. I want to be very clear that this, the Honest Elections that was passed by Portland's voters is very different from the city's open and accountable election program, which is a voluntary and public matching system with its own rules and requirements. So that's not what we're talking about today. However, if you are planning to use the program in the city's 2020 election, there are rules and regulations that you must already be following, and we are recommending that you follow both the Honest Election and the Open and Accountable Elections laws to be sure that you're in compliance. And you can find out about the Open and Accountable Elections Program by going to portlandoregan.gov/oaie. Aye.
Fish?
Well, as I listen to Mr. Cifori carefully, what I conclude is that there are some aspects of the charter amendment which are likely to pass constitutional muster, and there's a couple aspects that are going to require either a Supreme Court ruling, that is the Oregon Supreme Court, or a referral to the voters to change the state constitution. I think the idea that we piggyback off of the county action, if that has the effect of expediting things, is a good suggestion. I think we should encourage the city attorney to explore that. But ultimately, what we're doing here is asking a judge to give us some guidance as to the constitutional landscape, and the author of this has told us that at least potentially two aspects raise constitutional concerns based on prior rulings of the Oregon Supreme Court. So we need to go through this exercise before we implement it. Thanks to the auditor for bringing this forward. I think we had a very good discussion, and I vote aye.
Hardesty.
Thank you. I also appreciate the auditor bringing this forward and for her timeliness so that we're doing it as soon as we possibly can. I will say that as someone who recently went through eighteen months of running for office, clearly, big money in politics is a huge issue, and it is an issue that this measure attempts to-
Excuse me. Excuse me, you're interrupting. You're going to be asked to leave.
Why do you take money from Terry Bean, the white privilege real estate mogul, John Hardesty, or Rakesh Ginn, who can sell political power?
It wouldn't be a Wednesday, folks.
It wouldn't be a Wednesday, no. It would not, unfortunately.
I don't think he was here for your speech.
No, he was here looking for an opportunity, yes. And again, I think that we are headed in the right direction. Clearly, voters spoke loud and clearly, with over eighty-seven percent of the voters, so there's no question what the voters want, and I certainly hope that the city attorneys will be strong advocates for what the voters voted into law. Aye.
You, Daly.
Our electoral system was not designed to welcome or include average citizens or working people, let alone those from more marginalized communities, which means that their interests and perspectives are frequently not well-represented or well-reflected in our elected representatives. And I share the, I guess, sentiment or wishes of Julia DeGraw as someone who ran on a shoestring budget and who refused campaign contributions from corporate entities that do business with the city. I definitely could have used this kind of campaign finance reform to kind of even the playing field and lower the barriers to participation in our electoral system. So I'm very supportive of this, along with the vast majority of Portlanders who voted for it. And given the mandate that they gave us, we need to ensure we deliver a program that reflects the will of the people as closely as possible, I guess, with the exception of any constitutional concerns. So I'm eager to hear what the attorneys come up with, and I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I appreciate the auditor for bringing this up and staying here and listening to the testimony, and I want to thank Mr. Cifori in particular for answering some of the more specific questions I had regarding this. And there is no denying that this was overwhelmingly popular with the people of this community, and as a council, I believe we have an obligation to see it through. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. I believe the next item is 38 from the consent agenda.
Extend contract with Comstructure Consulting LLC for two years and increase the not-to-exceed amount by $2 million to provide additional on-call telecommunications services.
Very good. We have Beth Fox here to answer any questions.
Mayor, this is a second reading.
This is being brought as a courtesy to Commissioner Hardesty, who asked for an opportunity to ask some questions on this.
Absolutely. Good morning. My name is Beth Fox. I'm with the Bureau of Technology Services.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Beth, for being here. I was intrigued, because when I looked at the original contract, that was for $300,000, and we're extending it for $2 million additional dollars. Is there, so my question is, wouldn't we normally, if we're going to, $2 million, go back out for an RFP? And if not, why not?
It's a very good question. I think the contract initially was for $312,500, and it came through our normal flexible services, RFP. When we started to take a look at the work that needed to be done from a fiber perspective, when the Portland renovations started, we realized that we would need a significant amount of funds to make sure that the engineering of the move of all the fiber that was in the Portland building was done correctly. At that time, we decided to add $500,000 to the contract, which took us to $812,500. We are currently taking a look at our own fiber optic network, which relies on significant engineering cost, which is why we've asked for the additional funds and added an additional two years so that we can get through the engineering design of our current fiber optic network. Did that, was that too much information, or did I-
No, that was enlightening, but I'm still trying to understand the contracting process, right? So if you contract with someone for $300,000, and now all of a sudden, now it's a $2 million contract, how do you decide to just keep extending the contract and adding money as compared to going back out, doing another RFP process?
That's a good question. This, we did extend this to 2022, which is the ten-year limit on this particular contract, which we will then go out for another RFP. Right now, we're looking at other companies that can provide this information to start the process of creating a new RFP. It's a pretty complex engineering requirement, so we're looking at what we wanted to add in addition to what we did with the last RFP, so we can be a little bit more inclusive of what we need, so we don't have to continually keep adding funds.
Thank you.
Any further questions, colleagues? Please call the roll. Carla?
Fritz?
Thank you for your patience. Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Hardesty?
Aye.
You, Daly?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you, Beth. We are adjourned until 2:00 p.m.